Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for Monday, August 25th. There's something on this agenda before this, a proclamation that's been postponed, so we won't have that tonight, so could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littoral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. You'd all please stand.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing just for a moment. As we gather today, let us come together with open hearts and open minds. May our discussions be filled with respect and understanding as we aim to address the needs of our community. Let us draw inspiration from our shared commitment to progress and innovation, working towards solutions that elevate the lives of all residents in our city. Together, let's cultivate a spirit of collaboration and compassion guiding us toward a brighter and more prosperous future. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you very much. We have an agenda before us. Any changes, updates, corrections?
Move to approve the agenda, your honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And we have a set of minutes for August 11th for the regular meeting. Any changes?
Motion to approve the August 11th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the August 11th regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Nope. Then we have the August 18th work session minutes.
Move to approve the August 18th work session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the work session minutes from August 18th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Obstain.
Abstentions? Thank you. First up, public hearing, PUD 25-4.
PUD 25-4, an application filed by Rockford Homes, 999 Polaris Parkway, Suite 200, Columbus, Ohio, 43240. The application requests approval to rezonate 54.2852 acres from R-1A, one-family residential district, and A-1 agricultural district to R-PUD residential planned unit development. The property is located at 816 Grange Hall Road, further described as Book 3, Page 13, Parcels 29 and 30 on the Green County Property Tax Maps. Ordinance 25-15, an ordinance rezoning 54.2852 acres, further described as Book 3, Page 13, Parcels 29 and 30 on the Property Tax Maps of Green County, Ohio, from R-1A, one-family residential and A1 agricultural to R-PUD 25-4 residential planned unit development.
Thank you very much. Do we have an applicant present?
Yes, thank you. Jim Lipnows, Rockford Homes, 999 Polaris Parkway, Columbus, Ohio, 43240. Thank you for hearing me this evening. This public hearing section is for the rezoning, correct, not the site plan?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll keep my comments there. Consistent with the RFP that the city put out, this is a rezoning application to change from the two existing zonings into to bring the property together all underneath one zoning district of the R-PUD. So, without getting into the site plan, if you have any questions with regards to the zoning or the land use, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you very much. Staff input.
I can get started, anyway. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The case you have before you is PUD 25-4. And actually, this presentation is going to cover both the rezoning and the site plan portion. And then procedurally, council will want to have a public hearing for the rezoning and then vote on the rezoning and then have another public hearing for the site plan and vote on that. So this presentation kind of covers both the rezoning and the site plan. But as the applicant stated, they're here requesting approval of rezoning for about 54 acres of land, and then ultimately for the request for a site plan for 121 single-family residential units on that 54 acres. This being a PUD, it is a two-step process, but in our zoning code, there is the ability to run that concurrently, so that's what they're here this evening, is running that concurrently. Both went to planning commission earlier this month, and planning commission recommended approval of both the rezoning and the specific site plan to city council. The project's located northwest, just northwest of the intersection of Shakertown and Grange Hall. It's about a half a mile north of that intersection. It's on the east side of the Grange Hall. The property's about 2,300 feet deep and about 1,300 feet wide at its widest point, and has about 640 feet of frontage along Grange Hall Road. You can see on this aerial photo, which was from earlier this year, there was two ponds constructed as part of a stormwater project by the city in order to help the neighborhood that's to the north of this proposed development when it comes to flooding concerns that were going on for 50-plus years with that neighborhood. So this property was acquired by the city in late '22, early '23, and then the stormwater project started up to even earlier, or late last year, to complete. And so that's what these ponds are, part of that project. On our land use plan, the area classified within this portion, or this property, is low-density residential, and that states that any variety of residential is permitted as long as the overall density is less than two-point, or I'm sorry, less than three dwelling units an acre. It's also located within a vacant planning area, vacant planning area 64 on the land use plan, and that essentially is just a little bit of extra text that was more site contextual, and that just stated that should development occur within this, it ultimately should connect to the adjacent neighborhoods. With the pond being located where it is, the ability to connect to the north is quite limited, and so planning commission actually added a condition on that there be some pedestrian facilities between this neighborhood and the proposed neighborhood to the north. But ultimately, the vehicular connection will be to the east through Autumn Leaf. Again, the property has two zoning designations right now, the front being agricultural, A1, and the back being R1A, single-family residential. To the north is an A1 property along with R1A, single-family residential. To the east is R-PUD 96-7. That's a single-family residential neighborhood where the lots were a minimum of 18,000 square feet. To the south is the Traditions of Beaver Creek, which is a assisted-living facility. And then in the southwest, there's a, it's a vacant property owned by a place of religious assembly. So the proposed change in front of you this evening in terms of the zoning would be to change both the A1 and the R1 into a comprehensive R-PUD, and to allow the permitted and conditioned uses that are allowed in R1A, one-family residential into this PUD, and that includes single-family homes, assisted-living, daycare, and places of religious assembly. Also, in the proposed ordinance for your consideration is a maximum of density allowed of up to 2.3 dwelling units an acre. And again, the land use plan states that you can have up to three. The site plan showed a little less than 2.3, so to give a little bit of wiggle room in there, it was like 2.28 is in the site plan, so just round that out up to 2.3 dwelling units an acre in the proposed ordinance. This is the proposed site plan, and you can see the numbers indicate the phases that they're going to be going through with this development, where the first phase would be the westernmost portion, where they construct what you see labeled as Road C. And then when they get to Phase 2, that's when they construct Road B and connect to Southbrook Drive into Autumn Leaf. There is a condition in the proposed motion that they can only, they can't do more than 10 homes in Phase 2 without connecting that road, because in our subdivision regulations, there is a requirement that you can only have a certain number of homes without having a secondary access, and that's for safety. And that's why we're only permitting 10 homes in Section 2 before they finalize that road and make it open to the public. Again, the main access will be off of Grange Hall Road. It's situated so that when you're coming down the hill, you don't have limited visibility. It meets the ODOT regulations for line of sight and sight distances for people coming down that hill to be able to see, and people coming out of the new neighborhood to be able to see up, so that there are the appropriate distancing between that hill and the access point. The site shows four-foot sidewalks around all the residential lots. They do meet what we have in standard PUDs, is that if you build against an existing neighborhood, the lots that are adjacent to that should match that adjacent neighborhood, so you can see those first lots up in the front, they match the R1A 20,000 square foot lot size. And then the lots on the eastern border, about the PUD to the east are 18,000 square feet or larger. And this is just kind of giving an idea of the open space, the pond, the roads versus the single-family lots. And this is just kind of a close entree, you can see where there's the road, and then there's a street lawn, and then the sidewalk, and the sidewalk's in the public right-of-way. As we have with recent neighborhoods in the last five years, no street trees will be permitted in that tree lawn, well, street lawn, because it's not a tree, no trees are allowed, so it's a street lawn. But we require that trees be planted up in the yard behind the sidewalks, so you don't have the issue that we've seen in some of our older neighborhoods where the street, the sidewalks are starting to undulate because of the roots pushing up on the sidewalks. Again, these are just kind of the color-coded, the different phases, so you can see a clear distinction between them. One of the conditions in the proposed motion was a grading limit, where we have, it's not a no-cut zone, it's not a do-not-disturb zone, it's a grading limit, so that when the developers out there are grading, they'll have to mark off 25 feet everywhere you see in red, and then, sorry, it's mislabeled in this, but it's 20 feet where you see in orange, where they can't grade and retain the existing, the trees in that area. And then once it's turned over to the private homeowner, unless it butts or within a common area, which you'd have along the pond in the north and the pond on the western property, eastern property line, the property owners can cut those trees down and maintain them as they see properly. On Grange Hall Road, they're proposing a right turn-in and a left turn-in, and you'll have the through lane on each direction so that you're not impeding traffic by slowing down to pull into the neighborhood, so the applicant's proposing that on Grange Hall. You can see there is, I mean, it's color-coded, they have the streets a little too close to the sidewalk on this plan, so we'll have to move those back a little bit, but you can see that they're proposing some landscaping along Grange Hall Road, and then the existing landscaping along the north and along some of the perimeters to remain within that 25-foot no-grade area. That gives you a good look at the proposed landscaping. What they're proposing, again, is 121 units, and density's always a hot topic, and we really define density pretty simply within our zoning code, it's just you take the totality of the area and how many units are going to go on that. So of the 54.3 acres, 121 units comes out to 2.23 dwelling units an acre, and if you did the strict three, they could have 162, so they're 41 less than what the max, if you push the land use plan completely to the full max, it's 42 or 41 units less. In your packet, in Exhibit B, in the staff, I'm sorry, in the specific site plan section of your packet, there's several different architectural styles, and there's a condition that says that if they, essentially, it says that if different architectural plans come in in the future, they need to be compatible with this, these proposed architectural elevations that are included in your packet, because I haven't done a neighborhood yet that, a month after we get the approval, they say, well, can we add this model, can we add this model, can we add this model? So the condition allows some flexibility in adding like-for-like with the models. Now, a few of the conditions in the proposed motion. One is the hours of construction. They're limited to Saturday, Monday through Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., recognizing that there is residential in the north and the east and the south, so limiting the construction. Also, construction traffic is only permitted to come off of Grange Hall Road. We don't want them connecting to the existing neighborhood and then bringing trucks to the existing neighborhood. Any home that has a walkout basement with the walls that are, you see some neighborhoods where there's, the foundation is six or eight feet tall, and it's one big concrete slab, so one of the conditions of this is that any wall that other than 18 inches has, you have to extend that material, so whether it be hardy plank or whether it be brick, it needs to extend down into the walkout basement. The minimum square footage of one story is 1,400 square feet. That doesn't include the garages or porches, and then a two-story would be 1,800 square feet, and we're basing it off of houses, the single-story and multi-story houses that we've looked at within a mile of this property, what was the average of those, and so we can back into that. So a typical garage is about 530 square feet, so you're looking, if you include the garage, it would be 1,900 or 2,300 square feet for one or two-story. They don't have any, they didn't, in their packet doesn't have a landscape signage, like a entry signage package, and so we added a standard condition that it can't be higher than eight feet, and that they have to get zoning permits, and that's the same size that we saw with Brightwood, that we saw with Turner, we saw with the others. Most don't take the full eight feet, but it does offer some flexibility in design. They're usually pretty nice features, because that's what's the first thing you see when you come into the neighborhood. And just to remind everyone that any development with this will have to meet all of the stormwater runoff standards that we have in the existing code of ordinances, and what that states is, you look at the volume of, the flow of runoff now, they can't make that volume any more than it is now in terms of the rate of flow. So if a certain amount of gallons are leaving the site per minute, it has to be that same level post-development as pre-development. Again, we took this to planning commission earlier this month, they recommended approval of both the rezoning and the site plan. There are nine conditions in the proposed ordinance for your consideration, there's 36 conditions in the proposed site plan for your consideration. One of those conditions was added to the site plan since planning commission being that it, the approval of the site plan, because ordinances take a second reading in 30 days, the approval of the site plan is contingent on the ordinance being successfully passed, so if it didn't pass, then the site plan would be considered null and void. So that's the extra condition within the motion. So, staff recommends approval of the request, both requests, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following either of the public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so I will ask anyone that would like to speak. First of all, just to the rezoning, because we'll do this in two sections, the zoning and then the specific site plan, so if you'd come forward, state your name and address, you'll have three minutes. And you can have up to six minutes donated to you by someone else in the audience.
My name is Stephen M. Fisher, I live at 3646 Southbrook Drive, behind Valley Elementary. I ask you why. I've been to these meetings before, I said, let the neighborhood buy the land. I want acreage. My son wants chickens, can't have them, because we don't have five acres, we were told. So I heard the city bought at a cheap rate, why don't you do the right thing and sell it to the neighborhood, sell it to the neighbors, the city does not need any more developments. My wife had a medical condition Saturday, we ended up at the hospital, talking to the firemen going down Indian Ripple, the nursing home closest to the highway on Indian Ripple. He said they're in there all the time, they're short-staffed. So this developments could bring more, more firemen, city, and everything to that. And he's sitting there saying, you can see down Grange Hall? I go to the moose off Grange Hall, you know where that is way down there? People come down that hill, come off of Patterson. I have to be careful, I'm gonna be hit. So he's saying, coming down that hill, you're not gonna have an issue, it is an issue. And like, coming out on Southbrook, people are gonna cut my street. I come down Brightwood or Brightwood, and I cut Farm Brook, go past Brian Jarvis's house. Where do you think everybody's gonna come? They come down Brightwood, turn left on Southbrook, and go to that new neighborhood that's adjacent to that, right there, so you can't say. Then your zoning guy sat in here that lives in Apple Valley, I believe, off North Fairfield, that sits right here. He said he cut that new neighborhood off, between Shakertown and North Fairfield, he said he counted 40 cars going by him. So you bring those kind of cars down at that intersection, it's more. You have something at Ankeny going on, there's probably 100 cars down there, so the infrastructure can't handle it, you'll set a light forever. I cut the neighborhood, because I'm gonna wait at the light, because I leave the house at 4:30. Thankfully, I don't leave. But if you're out at 5:30, Shakertown, North Fairfield, which is right up the street from that, you can't go nowhere. There's too much traffic. It's gonna be taxed on the schools, and the zoning said, you can't do it. They're trying to build a new high school. And I believe you guys put the ponds in knowing this is gonna go in, because you took COVID money and built those ponds with a bridge, because if you wasn't planning on development, why would you put a bridge here? You would connect it with no bridge. So the city knew it's going in, the zoning knew it's going in, but why don't we know ahead that we're gonna go ahead and put a development there? Do the right thing and sell it back to the neighbors, so we don't have, because why do we need more neighborhoods? For what purpose?
Thank you.
I'm Cindy Fisher, and I live at 3646 Southbrook Drive. You know, changing it from R residential and agriculture is a big change. If you want to put residential in there, because this is gonna happen either way, we all know this. This deal's been done. Beaver Creek's not gonna be out of a million dollars. So it's just what goes in there, is pretty much what we've got to live with. I think the way that it was dealt with, being purchased and the work being done, you know, for 40 years, or as long as I've lived in Beaver Creek since 1973 in the home that I live in, for all those years, I saw those houses flood down there. Beaver Creek never did the right thing until it benefited them. So if you want to build there, then you leave part of it agriculture, you do what you want with the R. But I completely disagree. I agree that it's gonna tax the infrastructure, I know we can't talk about schools, how it taxes the schools, but I will tell you that when I had to take, he told you, when I had a hospital, I had to call the squad on Saturday, and they were very clear about how they can't handle what they've got. So I don't know how we're gonna do more. We're growing, we're gonna be landlocked, just like Centerville. Where are we gonna have green space? Oh, I hear we're gonna have the wonderful park. Okay, we will, but you're still taking away what Beaver Creek is about. And I heard years ago, don't worry, this is new Beaver Creek, this is not old Beaver Creek. And I'm okay with that. Things have to change. But how much do they have to change? So I would encourage you not to make that completely R-PUD, leave the agriculture agriculture, make a cut-through. If you have to make the R residential, then they have to accompany those lands around the side, because I know you guys aren't gonna be out a million dollars. And I don't blame you, but I think it was a poor decision to begin with. So I would highly recommend that you not do that. You know, I've lived in Beaver Creek my whole life. I've been proud to live here. But I'm not proud of the decisions that we're making. You know, we had this conversation a few years ago when it was about redwood development, and they pulled out. We wanted to buy property. There were about 15 or 20 of us, I was like, I'll pony up, you know, an acre, somebody else would, but they wouldn't let us do it, because that land was the way it was designated. Oddly enough, they could market surplus, and you guys could buy it, and then you could turn around and sell it. Where's that money going? Where's the money you're gonna get back for that? Where's that going? I mean, I think somebody should, I think we should really encourage somebody to find out what the money trail is on this, because I think you guys are making poor decisions. And I think that somebody will do it before it's over with. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One thing I haven't heard yet is discussion of the TIF that's gonna go with this. I gotta...
This is not for that discussion, sir. This is for the zoning.
Let me speak, please. This has to do with rezoning.
The TIF will come up next month, and you're welcome to talk about it then.
Okay. We, I won't talk about the TIF. The city wants to give away $800,000 to this development. According to city manager, and a tax I got, we get zero tax dollars from that right now. We're gonna get beaucoup bucks when this is developed. So that's gonna pay for the $800,000 of Grange Hall Road. Why are we giving this developer $800,000 to build something he's gonna build anyway? It makes no sense. The other thing is, where's the traffic study? Okay, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I see 150 new cars out there every morning, from say, 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. Same thing at 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock. Can that road handle that? Now, you know, at our Beaver Creek morning coffee meeting, it constantly comes up, what's going on on North Fairfield Road and Dayton Senior Road? That is not for traffic. That's city beautification, because we don't have a traffic problem. How can you discuss all that roadwork being for traffic when you never hear about a traffic issue in this city? It's for beautification, I keep saying. That's all it's for. That's all it's for. And it, you know, we've been there before in this kind of stuff. What's going on here? Now, we sat there the other morning, and we, we're gonna start putting up signs around Beaver Creek, okay? And what this one says, attention, Brightwood Springs, potential residents, before you buy, consider the following. Our current overcrowded school system is requiring new construction. A potential school levy will increase $172 per $100,000 of appraised value. So for a $500,000 home, I want all the new residents, it's fair, let these people know. It's gonna cost you another $800 a year in property tax, the potential of $800 a year, the potential of a Beaver Creek income tax. When they move in, let them know that there's a potential of an income track in addition to the $800 a year property tax. And we all know that we're gonna be looking at another road levy tax. We have to, to handle the kind of traffic that's out there already, and you want to dump more traffic out there. It's gotten ridiculous, folks. Now, some of you, I supported when you ran for election last time. I let you put your sign in my yard, under the hope that we don't continue to have meetings...
We've reached the three minutes. Someone will donate.
Okay.
Please come forward and give your, state your name and address.
James Curry, 843 Autumn Leaf Drive.
Thank you, sir. I kind of forget where I was at, but... it was under, sort of the understanding, there's gonna start being some no votes on this council. I don't even know why you take the votes. Just count the heads and say it's six to nothing, seven to nothing, for or against. I have, I can't remember last time. I saw a vote on this council that was anything but six to zero or seven to zero. Don't we have independent takers up here? Why not? Why not? Now, I know I can't talk about the TIF, but we had the TIF over at the Green. And I know that some people up here disagree. But I can get you the film. We're rich little, a township trustee asked the question, "Would you build this if you do not get the money?" The answer was, "Yes, I would. Yes, I would." We ought to ask the same question here. Why do I want to give $800,000 to a developer? Why? Why do I want to do that? Have me fix up the road. It's only gonna cost another $6,000 per house to make up for the $8,000. This has gotten a little bit ridiculous, really ridiculous from this city council. And you've got things coming up that's really gonna hit the fan because of this. How can we ask for more money from the citizens when you give it to developers? Think about it. Think about it. Think how we look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will correct one thing, though. We've had at least four votes here recently that were not that way. So it's just, just to clarification.
Okay, so I was wrong. Holy hell, a citizen was wrong?
I want to make sure we've got the right information out there.
Agent Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. And I did get to see the traffic study that they did. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. But I would also like to say that we need to do a countermeasure. And I'd like to see a comparison against Beaver Valley and Dayton Xenia. Where we have a huge amount and there has not been any kind of infrastructure improvements or anything else to the amount of traffic, the amount of homes and number of students or anything else that has gone out there. So it begs the question, is it gonna be just for beautification or is it going to serve a function? And that is a huge concern. So I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Dennis Wiseman, 3721 Red Oak Court. I live just on the north end of Autumn Leaf. I have really two primary issues, particularly with the west exit that comes out onto North Fairfield. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on Grange Hall. I don't know that I've heard what's gonna happen with that hill. You know, I've driven up and down there a lot. You know, there's oftentimes a police officer that sits at that church doing radar because people speed. I mean, you can see cars going by. I mean, I'm coming one way or somebody's coming up behind me. I'm trying to do the speed limit, but they're wanting to push me. They're wanting to do forty, forty-five miles an hour down through there. And if you come up over that hill, you crest that hill at forty-five miles an hour, a school bus is pulling out of that plat, they are not gonna be able to stop. And that scares me to death. I mean, talk about a liability issue, something that could be avoided right now. I don't know how to fix it. Maybe get rid of the hill? I don't know. Maybe raise that end of the street there? I don't know. But I think that needs to be done before any construction starts. The other side, the east side exit dumps into my plat. I've lived there for 24 years. It's been very quiet, very safe. Wonderful neighbors, phenomenal. I'm concerned that now we're gonna have a lot of new people coming out. I have no issue with them, but my issue has to do with, you know, with the delivery vehicles going up through, added delivery vehicles. Or maybe there might be some residents that want to cut through. Or there may be just some neighbors that say, "I don't want to go all the way down to Grange Hall in Shakertown. I'm just gonna cut all the way through." That's a very viable possibility. I know I do it sometimes from where I live. But to add another hundred and, I don't know, thousand homes, that's gonna be a big, big increase there. Speed bumps, maybe speed bumps might be put there on Southbrook, on the east side of Autumn Leaf. Or maybe a couple on Autumn Leaf to discourage people driving. I mean, even where we're at right now, there's people going a little bit too fast up through that plat. So I'd like to see that changed. Like those two issues to be considered. There's also a bridge on Autumn Leaf that when they put these two ponds in, this bridge was supposed to be dug out underneath. We were promised, I've been promised twice that that was gonna get done and it has not gotten done. Be interesting to know when that's gonna get done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Linda Cowall, 3770 Red Oak Court. I swore I wasn't gonna talk. I talked the last time when Redwood was here, but here I am. I have a question. I'm not sure if it's with the zoning part of it or the development. But I would like to know how many acres of water we have out there right now? How much acreage do ponds pick up? Maybe eleven? Okay. So that's eleven out of the fifty-four. So that puts the density quite a bit higher, in my opinion. My property borders this proposed new development. I'm concerned about the water flow coming off of it because y'all fixed it on the other end. And I personally have been getting a lot more water in my backyard since this water remediation project took place. As Dennis mentioned, the water does not flow under the bridge the way it's designed to. We had a water main break. The water actually flowed uphill into the new pond. Which seemed, you know, it won't go under the bridge on Autumn Leaf. So that definitely needs dug out, or we're gonna be flooded out. We also had the rains this spring. They started with the ponds being completely empty. The ponds went completely to the top. So if we have another spring rain like we had this year and we're starting with already full ponds, the water can't drain, where's the water going? This all needs to be considered. And I guess, another question is, I have a 25-foot drainage easement in my backyard. That is the high point of my backyard. Not where the water's supposed to go. Is there gonna be also an easement on the other side of the tree line? Because I have a great fear of water coming into my yard. Since it's all being pushed our direction now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the rezoning and we'll go to council. Councilman Littrell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple questions and they're based off citizen comments mostly. I do have questions regarding the hill. I do know this is about the zoning section right now. I guess it's prudent for me to hold off until we talk about that. So, uh, let me see. Yeah, I'll have to pass until we get past the zoning section. I ain't got anything right now.
Okay, Councilman Dorr.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to each and every one of you that came out. Much appreciated your comments. It's, I don't know how the vote will go today, but it's very important to have feedback and to try and figure things out as well. One comment, two questions, Mayor. The comment is a quote of typo, forgive me, city manager. It lists under the staff recommendation thirty-five conditions and then there's thirty-six that are listed below. So something minor to clean up. Both of my questions are for Mr. Mormon. These are always tricky in terms of rezoning and specific site plan. But I'm curious in terms of the flooding question and just what's been cleaned up in terms of Willowcrest, what it looks like now. And then as it pertains to this new area as well.
Sure. And just to speak a little bit to the question of the gentleman that spoke earlier. Years and years ago, before we envisioned doing this project, there was a thought that maybe someday we would take that channel and regrade the entire channel from Fairfield Road all the way back through the Autumn Springs neighborhood in order to produce fall. The, kind of the issue we had with the old problem was there wasn't really any fall to speak of from the neighborhood toward the water ultimately has to go. So again, years ago, the thought was we could regrade the channel, produce that fall needed to drain the area and solve the issue that way. So, and the gentleman's correct, when the culvert was installed, the footers were actually installed several feet lower than they had to be in order to enable us in the future to go through and perform that proposed project to solve the drainage problem. In the years that passed, you know, there's a lot of issues now with getting into channels and relocating channels and such with the Ohio EPA and the Corps of Engineers that would prohibit us doing that. The cost is a lot more expensive, too. So we opted for this option to solve that drainage problem, the two ponds.
And the neighborhood to the north, Willowcrest, that's had historic flooding. What's the status now?
Yeah, it's performed very, very well. We've had a couple rather large storms since the ponds went in. I've been out there on several of those storm events and drainage is drastically better, in my opinion, than it was previously. In fact, it seems to be the best draining part of the neighborhood. Further to the north, along River Hills, there's still some issues with water overwhelming the, some of the driveway culvert pipes getting into the street. But along Willowcrest and the southern piece of River Hills, it's much, much better than it was.
Appreciate it. To directly address Mr. Wiseman's comment and Mrs. Cowall's comment, what has the city promised in terms of the bridge on Autumn Leaf? I mean, what have we said we'll do and then has not been done, if anything?
Yeah, to my knowledge, it would just be, again, that proposal from years ago, that idea that we could lower the channel and, you know, and again, that's why the footers on that bridge were installed several feet lower than they had to be. If that project ever came to fruition, we would have the ability to do that without reconstructing that culvert pipe. Aside from that, I'm not aware of any other promises or work out there.
So it was a proposal, not a promise, was the...
Many, many years ago, back when Autumn Springs was first put in, I think in the early 2000s, I believe, is when that neighborhood was constructed, that was the thought back, back at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Wiseman, I have the opportunity to speak at the specific site plan. It'd be curious.
Sure. And we're more than happy to go out and check the concerns with the channel. And we did some surveying work on the channel by the bridge when the project first happened. We didn't see any issues, but we're happy to double check that again.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia.
Thank you. I don't have any questions right now at this phase. I'll have some questions for the specific site plan. But I do want to just tell residents that this is, this is something that challenges me because for years I've sat up here where private residents have owned property, wanted it rezoned and wanted to put in a housing development. And at that point, I would always tell the residents, "We're kind of handcuffed. There's not much we can do." This is, you know, we can't impede on the owner's rights and, you know, this is by law, these are all the things we can do. And now that the city has an opportunity, I struggled with what happens to this property. I will say that sitting here, though, on this side, I can feel pressure from the state that I feel like we're losing home rule a lot with the decisions the state makes. I feel like there's a lot of pressure to develop certain areas that are currently underdeveloped. And the role of this council is to try to make the best decisions that benefit the entire city. And it's weighing those balances of having control over what goes into this property versus potentially losing that control down the road. So with, you know, council, you know, with the city owning this property, I didn't mean to say council because it's not mine. With the city owning this property and taking a look at what happens with the zoning, it's really a struggle to figure out how the decision will impact the entire city to the best effect. So I get that and I struggle with that. And I do appreciate each of you coming up with your concerns. You know, it's helpful for us to hear. I think some of us didn't know some of the issues with the drainage over there, having not lived there ourselves. So we appreciate that. But it really, truly is a challenging decision. So I appreciate your understanding on that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. I drive that road every day. And I agree with the gentleman and I realize this is not, this is zoning, but we're filling over. That hill, as I understand it, of course, the actual physical change in it is a few years down the road. And I want to propose to council, though, that a flashing light be put in at the top, right just immediately north of that church that's there, that at least would alert drivers coming up that things are changing. Now, realize it's not the cure-all. The cure-all is to bring that hill down. But at least instead of a sign, which I don't think people might pay attention to, I'd like to throw out the idea that we actually put in some kind of a flasher that would catch people's attention. Now, would it reduce the speed that people have? No guarantee, but it'd be better than just simply, A, doing nothing or a sign that's standing there that nobody pays attention to. I really think that does have to be addressed. I'm afraid that in the number one section, we're gonna be putting in some 41 homes and you're gonna have workers and people building in homes. And I'm afraid we're gonna have somebody killed. Because I agree with the gentleman, they come down that hill like they were at some resort in a roller coaster. I just don't, I've never seen people come down that hill myself within the speed limit. Everybody's in a big rush and it's a challenge to get out onto that road. I'd just throw it out for council's consideration before we finish on this thing. I think we need a different type of attention, again, short of reducing that hill by some major, you know, construction project, which I know the administration is considering, but can't do it immediately. That's my only comment, Your Honor, at this point.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz.
I also have the same concerns and kind of similar to what Councilmember Littrell was alluding to. And so I guess, could you, Josh, could you refresh my memory on what we can take into consideration when it comes to rezoning and what is supposed to be considered with that?
So she just asked me what can be considered and what can't be considered in a zoning decision. And things that always come up in zoning decisions are traffic and schools. And I don't, I've heard some comments on both of those tonight. I hear them, I think, almost at every meeting. Schools and traffic cannot be considered in a zoning decision. There's court cases dating back to the 40s on traffic that just says, "Traffic is a byproduct of zoning, but can't be used to turn down an otherwise valid zoning determination." Schools, there's more case law on annexation versus zoning decisions. But based upon that case law, it's the same sort of considerations. You shouldn't be considering a separate political body in making a zoning decision. And the schools shouldn't be considered in that zoning decision. So those are two of the things that I've heard tonight that are brought up a lot that unfortunately, because of the court's decisions, you just cannot take into consideration when you deal with a zoning question. And I should make a caveat. In the specific site plan, we're gonna be talking about traffic and ins and outs. That's at the point where you can require deceleration lanes, turn lanes and things like that. It's just the overall impact of more cars in the city that can't be considered for zoning.
Thank you for that. Steph, I do have one question, which I should know the answer to, and I presume that it's not gonna be an issue. That property north, that agricultural property, where is there ingress and egress?
There is a, it might be easier to see on the aerial. It's easier to see on that arrow, nor that one. There's a driveway off of the street. I think it's at the end of that cul-de-sac. But there's no access from this property. It's not, any development on this property is not gonna cut off access to that A1 property. It's in the neighborhood to the north.
Have we received any input from that property owner?
We forwarded all the input that we got via email or letters to clerk. I don't know specifically.
Okay. The one that, where the A1 property is north?
I believe he was at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Okay. I think that the rest of my questions, or the majority of my questions, are going to go to the specific site plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
I too thank everyone for sharing your thoughts tonight. In fact, I was going to ask to look at this map because, you know, it was Mrs. Fisher brought up the difference between the ag and the R1A that exists there right now, and keeping one the same versus developing the backside. I wanted to see the delineations. Thank you for keeping that map up there. That's tough because there's no connection out to Grange Hall, which admittedly is a terrible street to come out on, but a second access point would be nice. Most of my comments, I think, with regard to zoning, I've got five or six for us, specific site plan have been answered, but I appreciate the engineer double-checking the channel and the bridge flooding issues because we definitely don't want to make anything worse. And I do think that the stormwater improvement that was done there has made things a lot better for the Willowcrest area. I guess the bottom line, in my opinion, is that this vacant planning area has been that way for a long time as single-family residential. And we, as council, when this whole project began, you know, kind of understood that we're going to improve the stormwater for the surrounding neighborhoods and most likely develop this as single-family residential. So, in my opinion, this kind of makes sense for us to rezone and do the best we can with the specific site plan and make those homes and that development something that fits the nature of our community, despite the fact that we understand that's more people moving into our community. But it's a pro and a con. It's what makes our community great. It's what drives our commerce, but it also causes some issues as well, so that's all I got.
Thank you very much. I would ask that Mr. Mormon, if you could go and check that bridge there at Autumn Leaf, sooner than later, just to see what's possible there, see what we have going on there, and see if there's any solution we could come up with briefly, so. I think I have a couple of questions at the specific site plan, but at this point, I don't have anything for this, so.
Motion to move ordinance 25-15 to a second reading.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-15 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. I've already had the presentation from the applicant. You want to do an app for the specific site plan, but we'll read.
Yes, thank you.
Hang on just a minute, let her read. Which clerk? We'll read what it is.
PUD 24-4, specific site plan number one. An application is filed by Rockford Homes 999 Polaris Parkway, excuse me, Suite 200, Columbus, Ohio 43240. The applicant requests approval of a specific site plan to allow the development of 121 single-family residential homes on 54.2852 acres of land. The property is located at 816 Grange Hall Road, further described as Book Three, Page 13, Parcels 29 and 30 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Jim Lipnos, Rockford Homes 999 Polaris Parkway, Columbus 43240. Thank you again for hearing me this evening. I do appreciate the zoning, and I was trying to keep these things a little bit separate, and I appreciate Randy putting together a thorough presentation. I don't want to duplicate anything, but I do have some answers from some of the comments that we've heard, and I do want to kind of introduce who Rockford Homes is and what we intend to do with the property. So, first and foremost, Rockford Homes, we are a builder that has been in business for 40 years. We're privately held, we're in the third generation, so we've been around quite a while. We do upscale semi-custom homes. We're looking at this project, starting at the base prices of about $550,000, probably closing sales prices of in excess of $600,000. We do multifamily, single-family, and general contracting, so we are kind of a multi-faceted builder that, I would say, in the general market, we do about 300 to 400 homes a year. So we're rather successful, build a good product, and are excited to be in Beaver Creek. Going to these, well, I should have probably, I forgot we put this little presentation together. Bob Yocum is the third-generation owner down there on the left and I'm there on the right. I kind of went through this stuff. So, really, just getting into the site plan. So we talked about the, you know, the surrounding uses when we were talking about the zoning. So in the RFP, there was some requirements to match the adjacent property owners on lot sizes, so we were able to meet all those requirements. We do have a 60-foot minimum frontage on some of the lots, and then in the northern section, and this doesn't show up on the screen, right? No, it doesn't, okay. But that northern, the northwest, like on the north side of those ponds, that area, while most of it is adjacent to the, you know, existing single-family homes, so those lots are larger, there's a bunch of them that are, that were not required to be that large and could have been 60-foot. We left those predominantly at 80-foot minimum because that area feels a little bit more special. That is also, was going to be our last phase, but for the fire department, we need to make that connection in Phase Two, so we're going to put a lot of infrastructure in to get to Phase Two. Again, we have our 121 home sites on 54, 55 acres, so we are about 2.3 units per acre, which is under the recommended three units per acre. Lot setbacks meet the code. We did ask for some relief on lots 1 through 7 at the entrance. There's an existing storm water, or, yeah, I'm sorry, a storm easement that kind of is in the backyards of those, so we've asked for a little bit of relief on that front yard setback. And then we did talk about Grange Hall Road quite a bit, and we did do a traffic study, and part of the traffic study was included a site distance study with the hill. So the, correct me if I'm wrong, the speed limit on that road is 35 miles an hour? Is that correct? Okay. But the site distance speed was calculated 55 miles an hour, and that was done because the average existing speed on residents driving on that street is 50 miles an hour. So, we designed the site distance safety at 55 miles an hour. We meet that site distance. In addition to that, we were required to do a southbound left-hand turn lane. We are also voluntarily putting in a right-hand turn lane into the subdivision to kind of help alleviate people breaking coming down that hill. In addition, I do know, we talked a bit about some funding. I just kind of wanted to remind everybody that those road improvements are being fronted and paid for by Rockford Homes. We are adding a new community authority on this site, and I know that's yet to be heard, but that is, in essence, a tax on just the residents that live in this subdivision. So there's four and a half mils additional tax that we're going to put on the 121 residents that live there that is going to fund about $3 million. Rockford Homes is asking to be reimbursed that 800, up to $800,000 for those road improvements. So the city's not giving me $800,000 to do those road improvements. The entry sign location, I know we did not include that with our site plan, but it will be on the south side of the main road as we come in in that open space there, and we'll submit that to go through either Planning Commission or staff, whatever that process is. So, with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. I believe that all our architecture was also submitted with the packet and the construction materials as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else from staff? With that, I will open the public hearing for the specific site plan. Anyone that would like to speak to that, please come forward. As before, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Dennis Wiseman. Thank you very much. So, a question I have about the lake, the lakes. You know, when a lake is first constructed, the concept is that they drain into the ground, drain into the soil. That's my understanding. I've never built a lake, but, so they drain into the ground. Well, eventually, there's enough builds or whatever, I don't know what you call it, that settles in the bottom, so then they start to do the runoff. So they haven't actually gotten to that runoff phase yet because these things are all still brand-new, and when there was a lot of rain, they mainly just went right down to the ground. So we really didn't have any runoff to speak of, of any consequence. But my question comes up as to what happens when these lakes finally mature? Where's this water going to go? Because these lakes are going to be full, that water's going to be going down off of that plat, so the concern with that. Second area, second question has to do with the sewage in Area 2, up in that corner. Where's that sewage going to run off? I don't know. Do you understand that question? It's okay, you have sewer pipes underground, and you've got lakes that's blocking pipes from going into the southern areas. So where's that going to go? Is that you're going to bring that into my plat? And last issue is, I would like to do an experiment, if you're interested, we can get the police support on this, but I'll come from Shakertown, 50 miles an hour. You pull out down there, you start to pull out, and you tell me how close I come to you as I pull out, as I come up over the hill. Do you want to do that? I don't trust that study, is all I'm saying. I'm not trying to create any violence either, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just looking at the site picture and everything else, and those two joining ponds and everything else, eventually, enough water's going to collect, and it's going to raise the water table in the surrounding area. Is that water table going to get up high enough to where it starts affecting basements in the homes that are adjacent to it? Because that is going to be a very serious issue that the homeowners should be aware of before they have to buy that. And with that, I'm closing my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Sedolka, 1268 Freedom Point. I was here to talk about the TIF, and this gentleman brought it up, so I'm going to go ahead and proceed. First off, a couple of things, we're just careful how we say things. So, it was mentioned that you say you can't do anything based on traffic, or you can't do anything based on schools. This is unique. You own the property. You can do what you want to do. So I just want to point that out. So I'm going to concentrate on the TIF. He called it community something, but he also stated that it's an additional tax only on the residents. So I'm very confused now, the way I understood the TIF.
That's not the TIF.
It's not the TIF.
No, that's something different that you'll, we'll talk about a little later, that will be also discussed later.
So, in the site plan, there's the turn lane, there are all the improvements are in there. There's no condition or nothing that states how that's getting funded. So that's my question is, how is it getting funded? What's the city on the hook for? And who's, how is it getting paid for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Fisher, 3646 Southbrook Drive. Mrs. Garcia, I noticed that you indicated that you do, and I understand that it's a fine line and that we've made a lot of good decisions for Beaver Creek and we've made bad decisions. And Mr. Kern, I know that you had brought up the point about the flashing lights. I want you to take into consideration the intersection of Trebon and Dayton-Zenia. On a weekly basis, there's almost a fatality there every week. There's not a week that goes by, and now, if I drive that, I kind of go, where's it coming from? I mean, I can see all directions, but there is consistently an accident there almost on a weekly basis. I belong to the Beaver Creek Moms page, and somebody's always flashing a, hey, check on your kids, you know, there's been an accident. I don't know how many fatalities there have been there, and we're talking about flat, fairly flat land with high visibility, and the speeds there are probably no different than what goes up and down Grange Hall Road. So turn-off lane or no turn-off lane, it's not going to solve the problem, and it's only going to encourage people to speed. Lights are a great idea. They honestly, I don't know, you get used to seeing things. It's just like anything else. You know, you pass it enough, you ignore it. You know, you may have attention the first couple times, and there is always, there's an officer there quite a bit. There's also used to be one that sat down at the bottom of the hill at Patterson Road. Still didn't stop anything. And we're talking about a large amount of traffic that goes in and out of that neighborhood. Now, when my son was in school, they were teaching Singapore math, and I didn't understand it. So to me, this seems like Singapore math, because 54 acres that can actually be developed is different than 54 acres minus 11 that can't be used for anything. So I agree with the lady, Mrs. Cowall, about the density. There's a density issue there. If I can't use that, if I have a pie and I take a piece out, I still don't have eight pieces to share, I've got seven. So, there's only enough for seven. So you can't count when there's eight pieces when there's really not eight pieces to share. So I think there's a density issue there. But I would really encourage you to think about that traffic. I would love, I mean, you can't compare the two, it's two different places, but what you can compare is doing what's right for Beaver Creek and what's safe for Beaver Creek. I have a 22-year-old kid. He doesn't know what I know about driving, you know, and these kids are more and more driving. They're younger. I didn't drive until I was 16, 17 years old, you know, but these kids are driving at 15 and a half now, and you're going to tell him to slow down over the hill? My goal was to come over here in Forest Dale and hit that bump, just see how far. We do hillhopping over there when I was in high school. So you can't tell me they're not going to do it there. I'm past the point of getting a ticket, so. But my point is, is it's going to happen. We can't stop it, and I don't know that this is going to deter enough. But I would really encourage that density to be reevaluated, because again, we don't have eight pieces in that pie to share if I take a piece out. So I don't think it's fair to count that pond.
Thank you very much.
Emily Euler, 3781 Southbrook Drive. I live at the property that's right at the edge of Southbrook where it would be connecting to this neighborhood. Currently, the 25-foot grading limit is only going to be enforced during the construction period, and I would like to request that the council add a clause to the site plan to require that the HOA maintain those trees in the open spaces in perpetuity so that they can't be cut down after the construction is over. We lost our whole tree line when they put in the ponds, and we've had a lot of wind damage, a lot more noise from Grange Hall. We've lost all the privacy that we had in our backyard when we lost those trees, and there's still a few of them left, and my husband has been maintaining that area, but it would be really great if you could add a clause in there so that those don't get cut down as soon as the construction's over. I would also like to request, as some others have mentioned, that the city stop including ponds, which are not land, in their calculations for housing density, with 11 acres of this being, this 54 acres being water, that makes it so that the actual density is a lot different. So, I just feel like it's becoming a slippery slope with this R-PUD regulations and the whole minimum three housing units per acre. When Autumn Springs was built in the late 90s, we have half-acre lots, and, you know, fast forward, 2004 Wagner Trace, it was down to a third acre. 2018, the council approved quarter-acre lots in Cedar Brick Farms in 2021. Using that method- Using that method of calculation, we had fifth-acre lots in the Sky Crossing off of south, off of, um, the road there, Shakertown. And, and now we're looking at 105 of the 121 homes being on one-sixth of an acre. And then, I'm not sure how the, the developer is going to follow the requirement in the specific site plan to put a tree in the front yard and not have it tear up the side box, the way Beaver Creek said. We don't wanna put trees too close to the side box if the lot's too small to be able to put a tree there. So I think that should be taken into consideration as well. Last I checked, the average lot size in Beaver Creek was slightly under a third of an acre, with most of the lots falling between .25 and .59 acres. We are changing the face of Beaver Creek by continuing to approve so many developments with such small lots, and I don't think that changes for the better. Also, as the others have mentioned, when the Traditions Facility went in several years ago, it did increase some flooding in the Autumn Springs community, and, and so many of our residents are very concerned about how that, how adding more homes and roadways and things so that the, the water can't be absorbed. I know they put in the ponds, I live right next to it. But, and they put a concrete ditch right through the middle of my backyard, but that ditch doesn't connect anything. It's the, the drain, it just, it just ends partway through my neighbor's yard, and so, as they said, they need to empty that out. So please consider adding those clauses and decreasing the housing density. I would very much appreciate that to fit the real nature of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You were told construction is gonna be 7 to 7. When you're building nursing homes and other, construction's going on 11 o'clock at night. When we call it on Monday, they're like, it's inside work, they can do it. So how can you say construction is 7 to 7 when you let 'em work till midnight, 'cause it's inside? Also, your attorney said you cannot say streets and schools. What about your fire services, your road services, your police? That is taxing those services. You can say, no, you can't, but yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this, and council, start on the other side this time. Councilman Kern.
I'm just a broken record. Same thing. I'm still asking council to consider something very unconventional, where we put some lights up, it would, it didn't have to be permanent, but at least for a while to get people's attention. Down at the bottom, there's a lot of people and a lot of construction going on. And maybe, just maybe, that would help to reduce, so we're not talking about somebody getting killed, or kids getting hurt, running across that road, or certainly, workmen. Just give it a thought, versus just sticking a sign up there. I think just pay, just past Bethel Church, it would be, you know, north of Bethel, maybe on the other side, I don't know, but the administration could, could give that consideration. At least till we see, what, if we can change the mindset so that people don't come over there and turn that into a roller coaster and really have some damage. Broken record, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Well, I don't have any opposition to that, Councilmember Kern. I think that it's a creative idea, at least. I'll be very honest with you, I drove this last week.
Oh, wow.
And looked down at my speedometer, and I was going a little bit faster than I thought I was. So I think that, I mean, the concerns are incredibly valid. I don't drive Grange Hall every day, and so I really wasn't paying a whole lot of attention, and so I'm just as guilty as anyone else out there. And that does concern me, putting an entrance into an allotment right there. So I, I share your concern and understand that. On that note, could we get Mr. Mormon just a brief recap of the traffic study that was conducted, please? For your, what you looked at with the traffic study that was provided to you?
Yeah, certainly. Kind of, the traffic study itself, they looked at several intersections along Grange Hall Road. They performed traffic counts at each of those intersections, and then knowing those existing counts, they projected the new traffic that would be coming from the, the new development. And they distributed those additional trips and added those to the existing counts at those intersections. By doing that, they can determine what's called a level of service at the intersection, which equates back to how much delay there is for, for various movements. So when they looked at it with the existing counts plus the projected counts from the new development, they didn't identify any, any bad levels of service, where everything seemed to be within acceptable levels. So because of that, no improvements were recommended in any of the intersections that they studied as part of the traffic study. And I should say too, part of that was, again, that line of sight analysis. The Ohio Department of Transportation, they, they publish a criteria that designers look at when they're gonna build a, a new road or a situation similar to this, where they publish what the, the necessary minimum line of sight is, based upon the height of the driver's eye, the, the curve, et cetera. And it all complied with the requirements that the Ohio Department of Transportation publishes for...
And that line of sight analysis was conducted at the proposed entrance of the new allotment?
It, it was. They actually had to, had to move their, their roadway. The, the first location where the street was, it didn't quite meet the criteria. So by moving it back, it kinda changed the angle on the, the line of sight that people could see where it did meet the criteria, once they adjusted the driveway slightly north, or the entrance drive slightly north.
And in terms of the level of service, it was determined that there wasn't, there was, it wasn't, there was no need for improvements to be made. What drove the decision to put the deceler, left-hand lane and right-turn lane in to the intersec, or into the allotment?
Sure. And to me, those are, those are safety improvements, where, you know, you get a, a pretty good number of cars along Grange Hall Road. I think the traffic count was around 7,500, or something like that, per day, and you get some, some higher speeds as well. So in order to get people out of the flow of traffic, have them, give them a safe place to execute the left-hand turn, and also with the right-turn deceler lane, it gives the drivers the opportunity to get out of that through lane of traffic. When they're slowing down to make that right turn, they're, they're not having somebody coming up behind them. So those are both safety-oriented improvements.
And when is the projected timeline, or what is the projected timeline on those improvements?
I, I believe there's a condition on the approval where they have to have those improvements completed prior to, I'm not sure if it's first, prior to the road being open to traffic, I believe is a, is an approval condition.
I'm looking at the right thing. Condition number seven, road improvements on Grange Hall Road shall be constructed to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to the opening of the proposed access point onto Grange Hall Road for public use. Is that what you were looking for, Jeff?
It is, yes. Thank you.
So those turn lanes will have to be in place before that road opens and people start driving in and out?
That's correct, yes.
And does that proposed road improvement mean the proposed road improve, or the, does the road improvement on Grange Hall have to occur before construction occurs? Because you'll have trucks coming in and out of there?
Um, yeah, you know, there, there will be some construction traffic, where they'll have a temporary construction entrance, they'll be back there installing the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, all that stuff, building it. You know, I would say that would be happening before those improvements are built, but before it's open to the general, general public for use, those improvements would have to be in place.
Okay. And then, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure who is properly suited to answer this question, but to get to Mr. Spoco's question, how is that Grange Hall improvement being funded? Can someone explain that?
I can probably explain that. So there, there was a petition filed for a new community authority last week. It's on the agenda, I think it's maybe last thing on the agenda to set a hearing for that. That would put a 30-year, 4.5 mil levy essentially on the houses that are built in that area. The projected revenue from that, as he mentioned, is exceeding, it far exceeds the $800,000 that are being repaid to do those road improvements. So the city, the citizens who are gonna move into those areas are going to be paying for those road improvements over the years, plus additional funding to the NCA. So the, it'll be the people who buy homes that are paying for those improvements.
Thank you. Let's see. I would like to address Mrs. Euler's questions about the 25-foot grading and the HOA maintaining that in perpetuity. Randy, could you talk to me about that, please? Talk to us about that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that's, I don't think there would be a problem to add that condition. It's a lot easier to have a unified, if there's a HOA board that owns the common area, to require them to maintain the trees. It's a lot easier to do that than to try to tell 121 different homeowners that they need to maintain the trees. So I, I don't think it would be an issue adding that onto the motion.
Okay. I would propose to council that we would add such a condition. The other thing that I did wanna address is the density. I know that there's not an issue, or there's not a whole lot we can do about it right now, the way that our zoning code is written, but I do want to encourage the residents here, as well as others, we are in the process of updating our zoning code, and I'd be happy to speak to any of you, I sit on the steering committee for that, about those. And there are different ways that we are looking at calculating that density, and whether we do include those lakes, or we say, hey, you have a density area, so you have a small amount of acreage where you can put all these houses, but all the surrounding area, you can't put any houses there. So it'd be a very dense in one area, but the rest of the surrounding area would maintain its aesthetic appearance. And so we are trying to come up with creative ways to try to condense some of the housing and to adjust those zoning requirements. Again, it's not helping your issues today, but it is something that we are looking at forward-thinking, so please continue to provide input on that. Those changes have not been made yet, they are still not set in stone, that process is still ongoing, so please reach out, and I'd be happy to talk with you about any of those proposals. Um, let's see. Sorry, Mayor, I kinda got this all messed up. I would like to address Mr. Fisher's concerns about fire, road, and police by the addition of the homes. Is that a consideration that we can take, is that something we can take into consideration? One, and two, has that been taken into consideration?
So whether it has been or not, I definitely, I really have to defer to the police department and the fire department. In terms of consideration, this is not one I've heard brought up before, but it's similar to the road situation, where if you're going to look at just increased population in the city, that's what puts a tax on the schools, that's what puts a tax on the, the roads, same, similar to police and fire, and those things, the courts have said you can't consider. So I, I haven't done specific research on that, but I would be surprised if it was not the same answer. The city, the, I don't, the city doesn't do the fire department, but the police do the fire department, and the city, I think, has a plan to adequately police the, the community, and I think the fire department does as well.
Chief, could you speak to that, please? I almost didn't see you back there, it was like you were hiding.
Mr. Mayor, council?
So yes, just to echo Josh's statement, we can, you know, patrol and, and provide the service that's required when new neighborhoods come in. Obviously, the possibility exists that it's gonna create more of a call load for us as, as there's new neighborhoods, but there's not a direct correlation between increased crime, you know, if there's a new neighborhood or things like that. It's just more area for us to patrol and, and to deal with. But we're able to do that.
Thank you. And, let's see. We talked about that. The last question I have, I think is probably for Mr. Mormon again, I'm so sorry. The concrete ditch that's on the Southbrook property, is that, what is that? And where is it supposed to go? Or is it gonna be connected in?
Sure. The issue is, is we had to have some very, very flat grades out there, and if you try to build a, a grass well on a very, very flat grade, it typically holds water, and it becomes kind of, kind of a nuisance, it's hard to cut the grass, stuff like that. So instead of leaving the property owner with, with that kinda situation, we elected to install that concrete channel where you can make the water flow better out of flatter grade if it's in the concrete channel, instead of sitting there and causing those maintenance issues. The channel, it directs the water to underneath the culvert, and that's kinda where, where it ends. There's no plans to extend it at this time, but that's kinda the reason for it, is to try to avoid having that nuisance situation for the, for the resident.
I do have one more question for Randy, sorry. To address Mr. Fisher's concern about the inside versus outside 7 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Yeah, the condition actually addresses that no exterior work. So the theory is when you, if you got a plumber in there working to try to make up, or, you know, get ready for an inspection the next day, I mean, as long as it's an under-roofed property, the noise, the exterior noise would be minimal, because they're in a completed structure. And that's just to keep the project moving along, so it doesn't take an extra several years to get these projects completed. You know, you want, you wanna limit the exterior construction as much as you can, but when you get inside the building, you know...
Is the interior requi, like, I guess, what's, what's the delineation? Like, what is considered to be interior? Does the four walls have to be up? Do there have to be windows, doors to keep the sound in, or is it just...
It's a closed instruct, uh, enclosed structure, so I mean, it would have to be weatherproof. I mean...
What are our noise ordinance, is that 11 p.m.?
I believe it's 11 to 6. I believe that's the time.
Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz, I wanted to clarify my position, since we are talking about specific site plan.
Yes.
Just like traffic, where you have deceleration lanes and things like that, the fire department says it needs an access point, or the police say, I've seen it used in a specific site plan where there's an emergency exit that only emergency vehicles could use, you could consider that in that specific site plan stage of that. It's just not the overall needs of the city to, in a zoning decision, that you don't consider those issues.
I think I'm done, Mayor. Maybe. I might be back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman...
Well, I'm not sure what I'm gonna say. Councilwoman Schwartz over there, she's, maybe it's 'cause we're on planning together, I don't know. But Randy, don't move, I do wanna ask you something. Ms. Fisher brought up the point again, and I will, I'll admit that when I first got on council, this was a question that I had. Regarding the use of the entire land and the retention pond, that has been something that is, the way I understood it, this was something that, that came into effect whenever they stopped doing all the water runoff mitigation underground, and they started building these retention ponds. Is that, whenever that decision was made, that it was all encompassing of the area?
I mean, it's been that same definition since I got here, since I've been here. And the, it, and if you go up into the impact fee district, if there's some, like, there will be, like, if this property were in the impact fee district, we wouldn't count the acreage that they're, they would be dedicating for the improvements of Grange Hall Road, 'cause that's, that's slightly different acreage, and essentially, because the impact fee, we'd be paying for it with the impact fees, so they wouldn't get credit for something that we would have to be paying for. However, we've always defined it as, you know, the land being considered. With these ponds being so large, the reason that they're so large, and I, I don't know the numbers, I'm just throwing it out, that they're large because they're encompassing water that's off-site, that, that's helping fix a situation that has, that's not a part of this development, it's because of the water that's coming from the property to the north. So these ponds are a lot, from a percentage point, they're a lot higher percentage of the project than you would find in an other traditional neighborhood. the project than you would find in an other traditional neighborhood. I think Autumn Springs, I think that was, like, I want to say the numbers, like, the pond there is like, one and a half acres opposed to 10 acres here. Because it, I mean, they have some other drainage in, in that drainage swale, but I'm just saying, from a percentage point, these are extraordinarily large ponds, considering that they're, they were built to help the situation off-site.
I just, I, I get it. It does seem like some of the lots do seem smaller because of the whole lot, the whole area is used, it was 54 acres, and you had to subtract out the 11, and I get that. And we're changing zoning now, so again, if anybody has input on that, you know, contact us. Uh, you know, I don't have anything else for you, Randy, thanks. I do have a question regarding, she asked about the seven to seven. I guess my concern, whenever Mr. Fisher made the comment about the work after, after hours, it wasn't so much, instantly, I knew there was probably inside work that was done. I do know that industrial-sized generators do generate a lot of sound. Apparently, an enclosed structure does not mean a electrified structure, right? So they'd...
Not necessarily, right.
Highly likely be running generators. Is there any way that they could limit some of that, the, you know, large industrial generator? Because that's no different than running a construction site, really. If something like that's running here by somebody's house, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah, if council wants to add a caveat in there, I mean, the major concern was, you know, bringing in materials, grading with large earth-moving equipment. Roofing is a big, big concern when someone is putting new roofs on a house, it's, it's a lot of noise to use the air, air hammers or whatever, the nail guns, sorry, to put the roof, a new roof deck on. So, we try to, it's kind of a give and take. You want to have these projects move along, so that they're not under perpetual construction for 15, 20 years, at the same time you, you try to lessen the amount of external effects as you can. So if you, if you went one way and said, no construction at all, only very limited hours, you're going to, you're going to draw the construction projects out for years and years and years. So that, that's where we try to come up with a happy medium. You can do work seven to seven outside, and you can work outside of those hours if it's, if it's interior work, so you're not hamstrung.
I don't disagree. Have we ever done anything like that before? Limited...
These, this, I mean, this same condition is what I pulled off of Bridlewood, and off of Turner, and off of Amberwood. I mean, it's, it's...
Was there any issues that you remember that was problematic?
The only issue is the contract, the contractor not following the hours that are required.
Do we have a way to enforce that?
We do, and I've been on a particular project about that recently, and they seem to have listened to our concerns, because we've, we've threatened them with requiring safety court, additional courses that they have to have the city attend before we let them start building again. So that kind of, that stopped them pretty quickly.
There was one other thing that I, I had a question about condition number eight, and I don't know if you have that with you.
Yep.
It confused me, I guess, in some way. It has to do with the Southbrook Drive. It says it'll be paved, but then it says that within 60 days, but then it also says that in the form of first course asphalt. Am I, I'm reading the right location?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I guess I'm confused. What exactly are they saying? You know, what, what's happening there? Is it going to be a roadway, or is it not going to be a roadway?
It's going to be a roadway that's open to the public within 60 days of that 10th permit.
Okay.
A final course is usually not put down until a majority of the project's done, because you don't want to run heavy loader trucks on the final course of asphalt, because that will tear it up. And then they'll have to, so you put that first course down, so the cars can actually go on it, and then when they're mostly done with construction, they'll come in and put the final ass, the course on. And that really is dependent on where they're at in the construction process.
Okay.
Because if they put it down, it'd be torn up before they, they open the fourth.
Yeah, I guess the caveat to this was the fact that it's 60 days of release of the 10th residential permit for Section 2.
Right.
I do know the, the builders stated that Section 2 is going to be the main, the larger homes up towards the, what is that?
The area in pink.
So, those would be 10 permits, regular, whether or not they're the first 10 houses here, where, or the houses clear in the very back, then, right?
They're not, I mean, in theory, yes, but they're not going to build the houses in the back until they can get connection, so it's going to be those southern houses in, in Section 2.
Okay.
Because they can't run construction traffic through the existing neighborhood, so to get back there, they'd have to have a road to build on.
And the condition is that they can't, you can't go in there and start in one, and then, and then make the determination that we're going to go ahead and start in three?
That was, that was the intent there, I wrote it so that they couldn't...
Okay.
Do three or four. I'm trying to eliminate loopholes anywhere I can.
All right, we're on the same page. I appreciate it.
Not that they would use a loophole, I'm just saying that...
Not them. Others. Uh, that's all I have for you, Randy, thanks. I do, I just want to make a comment regarding the roadways. I know that we can't use the information from the roadways, but Grange Hall is an issue. My mother-in-law, as Mrs. Fisher, she stated, that intersection, maybe it was Ms. Yule, Yuler, I'm not sure. One of them's brought up the intersection at Patterson there, and it's Patterson and Grange Hall, right? Yeah, that stop sign. My mother-in-law was actually struck T-bone there. There isn't much we can do in regards to people that don't know how to drive, and drive poorly, unfortunately. The people driving 50 miles an hour, I don't think if you put a flashing light, a siren, or whatever, there, I don't think that necessarily is going to slow people down. We've seen crashes on the road at that intersection particularly, and it's still, people run the, run the stop signs, so. I, to where I agree with Councilman Curran, we could try to think of something that might get somebody's attention, but I do believe that, other than somehow alleviating that slope and extending that line of sight, I don't think that there's going to be much else that's going to be able to be done that's going to be successful. I would like to, I know the chief's here, and I'm sure he's wrote it down already, extra traffic control on Grange Hall Road, I'm sure he has. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Duer?
Want to reiterate my thanks to everyone for being here today. I know you'd much prefer to be doing other things than spending time with us, so thank you. And I know for many of you, it's your second or third time here, so thank you for your time. On the two points raised, Councilman Curran's flashing light, I'm in support. I think if this passes, we need to do something. Part of me thinks about a speed limit change, but that might be difficult as well. It may not change anything, but I think the flashing light does at least do something. I am in support of Mrs. Yuler's condition number 37 on the 25-foot no disturbance area. I think that's consistent elsewhere in the city and other ordinances that we have passed, even in recent times. I would like, Mr. Burkett, can you explain density to, and how it's calculated to the audience, just because I know it's caused some confusion, what we can take into consideration as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just go back to the zoning code, the density I have in the zoning code, it's highlighted, it's just the number of dwelling units per acre of land. I mean, and I get the concern that the, the large ponds are being used as part of the But as I stated earlier, some of the ponds are, are there because of neighboring concerns. They wouldn't, probably, I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure, but I doubt they would have to be that big if it was a self-contained pond. You look at other projects, and they don't have quite near the percentage as a pond. But I, I don't know that for a fact, because I haven't studied that or anything. But in general, I mean, density is just how we calc, I mean, it's just how we've historically calculated it. And then, you don't, you don't want to penalize somebody for putting in sidewalks, opposed to not putting in sidewalks, you know, where you can save that extra five feet or no street. You're trying to encourage beyond just the bare minimum, and having amenities, open space, walking paths, ponds with fountain, you know, you don't, you want to encourage that as part of a development, rather than strictly only a lot with a house, a lot with a house, and a, and a road with a curb.
Appreciate it. And as Councilwoman Schwartz noted, it's, it's a work in progress, it doesn't help us, you know, for this decision, but it is something that the council is actively working on for the future. I appreciate it, Mr. Burkett. As Vice Mayor Bales noted, there are pros and cons. I think across the city, the opportunities with the Beaver Creek Development Corporation can do a lot in the future. This doesn't help this development, but it can help the city in the future. And should the NCA pass, this will help this development. There's, you know, Mrs. Fisher said, you know, where's the money trail, you know, first set of comments, but there's a lot of improvements that can be done to Grange Hall that'd be paid for by the residents here, and thus saving property tax elsewhere in the city. So there's a significant pro to this. But I likewise share the concerns of many residents with the con of the density. So I want to go at density a little bit now. Lot number eight, where does the driveway go?
Um, it's hard for me to read those numbers. Really, driveways are going to be set up, it's dependent on what model home that they actually put on that site. The, the square that's delineated there on each lot is actually the buildable area of the house on that lot. So that's not necessarily the, how big the house is going to be, it's going to be somewhere in that square. So it depends on, I mean, I guess it depends on what model home they actually put on that site itself, is, is the decision point of the driveway.
I, I, yeah, listen. I think regardless, though, the driveway's going to come awfully close to the corner to make it unsafe, and even in violation of our own ordinances in terms of distance. I mean, it comes out right at a corner. I don't see how the house can go there sensibly without causing potential problems.
For that particular lot, I mean, when, when they do come in with a model and come in with a driveway, we'd have to, we'd look at that, make sure that whatever they're proposing meets our general credit ordinances and doesn't violate anything in the PUD. But again, I mean, it, it could be a single-story house that they put there, it could be a two-story house. I mean, the single stories are typically a little wider, the two stories are a little bit more narrow. And some of the lots are set up, could have front load, side load, it's, there's a lot of variant, variables there, and they would still be, they would still have to meet our construction standards when it comes to driveway locations.
The tricky point is there's an easement.
Yeah, that's a, that's a storm sewer, or, I'm sorry, that's a storm sewer easement.
So the driveway has to come out through the middle, and it comes out to the corner...
Or it could come off perpendicular to either of the two roads. And perhaps the advocate can speak better to this particular lot.
Please.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. When we get into final engineering, we, we don't know exactly where the storm sewers are going, where the catch basins are going to be, if that lot number eight, see that little green strip where the storm sewer is kind of, that's where the, conceivably, the storm sewer would go. That might be, go between lots seven and eight, versus between eight and nine. We don't know that until we get into final engineering. There's also ADA ramps that, that we'll have to work with. It's not a condition that we love, but it's a condition that we have on a lot of, on a lot of lots that when we develop. And so that driveway will not, probably not, until I have the actual house plan that we're going to be the, will not be a straight driveway, it'll come out in turns, so it, it'll avoid ADA ramps on the corner, and/or any trees or anything else that, that is at that intersection. But, again, when we get into final engineering, we'll determine exactly how that driveway will go. So when we submit for the building permit, we also submit what's called a P&amp;G plan, a plot and grading plan, has the house orientation, sidewalks, driveways, utility connections, shows the setback, shows the grading of the lot. And that all gets submitted to the city's zoning department for approval.
Tricky part is, we're approving a specific site plan that's seemingly subject to change.
Only allowed to change for, for things for engineering. So if like a road radius needs to be corrected to meet code, and/or the sanitary, or, I'm sorry, the storm sewer, you know, pipes need to be upsized to handle the stormwater drainage, then they'll be upsized. Those are things that are typically done through the final engineering construction documents.
Thank you. I want to move to road G. This may be my eyesight, it's a little tricky to see, but are they 58-foot front lots?
They are 60-foot minimum at the building setback line.
At the setback?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's per code.
But it's listed at 58 at the...
At the right-of-way line.
But 60...
60-foot minimum at the, at the building setback line. That's per code.
Page 93 of the document, these are rough, but I, are the renderings, the, the squares, rectangles, et cetera, inclusive of garages?
No, the square, if there's square footage listed on it, that's a living area.
Sorry. Let me rephrase the question. Page 93, is this page 93?
I don't think we have it in the presentation.
Okay.
Is it, is it a, is a brochure, a, a house plan?
So a lot of the, no, this doesn't quite work, because the, it, it shows a rough area where a house will be built. Mostly, they're in squares, but in looking through the plans of a range of different homes, beautiful, by the way, but a number of them are much more rectangular.
Okay.
So, if, if a, if a would-be resident wants to buy a home, you know, what kind of limitations do they face? Because a good number of these, you can buy something that's rectangular, where the garage goes off to the side, and it doesn't fit the, the square that's on page 93 of the packet.
I understand the question. So we are restricted to what would be approved, if you approve it this evening, by the setbacks that are shown on the plan. So that is generally a 30-foot front yard setback, five-foot side yard setbacks, and a 35-foot rear yard setback. Now, there are a couple exceptions on that. Lots one through, I think it's one through seven, have a reduced front yard setback to 25 feet. And then the rear yard setback is expanded anywhere where we have abut the perimeter or existing zoning. That goes up to 50 feet. The side yards, while they are at five-foot minimum, there's a requirement that the homes must be 15 feet apart. So, a lot of extra work on my part, kind of programming these lots, so I'm going through that process now to determine what's the best way to do that, that's not too confusing for the buyers and/or our internal staff. So, we're going to be programming each lot with individual setbacks that will maintain a minimum of five-foot side yard setback and 15 feet between units.
Is the same true of lots 51 and 52? Is the same true of lots 51 and 55 that have water main and sewer easements respectively?
Yes. Where are they on that map? I just want to confirm. Oh, yes.
Because I believe there are, there are easements.
Yeah, there are easements and those were fronted on road G.
Yeah, I'm on page 105. And the, the map and the easements that run through between 51 and 52, 54 and 55, there are easements that run through, this is again page 105 of the packet, but it's not here on this map.
So what's showing on the, on the map, the dotted line in the front yards are the building setbacks. So we're actually not, I don't think showing easements on that plan. At least they're not showing where these, we have storm water, water line easements that go between lots generally speaking. And those are typically within the setbacks as far as the width goes. Now, we will have certain instances, as you see between lots 11, 12, 15, 16, 19, and 20. We very easily could have put those lots together and just put the easement over them, 10 feet on either side of the lot line. But we thought we would leave open spaces. So those are like connection points back to the pond. So we could have just left them as easements and put the lot across it. That would have helped me out a little bit with, yeah, I'd have a 70-foot wide lot there. So I wouldn't have really an issue with this 15-foot between buildings. But we decided to leave that open space for pond access. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Actually, if you could just stay up there very quickly, I have a few questions for you. So one of the questions I had was, you know, lots 36, 35, those look fantastic. What was the decision or what is the market telling you as far as the decision to make the lots smaller throughout the site?
So generally speaking, if you kind of remember like the 1990s, you got the, with the phrase McMansions, a lot of two-story open floor plans, large yards, 90-foot wide lots, et cetera. The buyer in today's market is tremendously different than the buyer from 20 years ago. They live inside their house. They have a lot of extracurricular activities. They're not looking and not interested in, in having a yard or a large yard at that point. They're looking for maintenance-free ease of use. We've actually seen single-family home communities where they, their HOA maintains the lawn for them, so they don't have to do it. A lot of new communities don't allow sheds. So, you know, garages are either coming oversized or they're becoming cramped. It's, it's just another way to kind of handle, kind of like lifestyle changes. So when we look, when we come into a new community, the first thing we do is a comprehensive study on what the market has, both in pricing and offerings. We shop other builders. We find out what's selling, read the bins reports. We go, we do a lot, a lot more data analysis than, than you would think to determine whether we're going to move into an area or not for market. So we are very comparable with what today's buyer is looking for.
No, I appreciate knowing that. Thank you for that. The other question I had too is, can you speak a little bit to some of the questions that have been circulating about this seven-to-seven construction and how your company typically handles that type of work?
Yes. So there's two, two different phases of construction. I'll, I'll break that down into, into development and then also home construction. So development, somebody had asked about whether the turn lanes would be done prior to the development of the interior. The answer to that is, is no. It kind of happens altogether. We will try to do the Grange Hall road improvements during the summer, not during when school's in session, just because we're going to have, there's a lot of stuff going on on the road. So the development, when the, you know, the excavator shows up on site, they'll pull in at, you know, 6:30 in the morning. They start, you know, pulling their equipment out, getting ready for the day. They won't turn their machines on until seven. They know, they, they, they know this. They've been chastised if they turn their machines on too early. So they'll warm it up. But generally, that traffic, that constructions traffic stays on site for the duration of the day until they leave. Excavation, development guys, those guys are gone by four, five o'clock. I've never seen them stay till after seven. Now, home construction's a little bit different. So the exterior, again, you're going to work daylight, during daylight hours. A lot of the exterior trades do knock off at five o'clock. You will see plumbers or drywall sometimes showing up, you know, later in the evening. We have not in, let me see, we have 27, 28 developments that are open at this point that are actively in construction. I would get the phone calls if we had any that if anybody was working kind of like unreasonable hours. I don't know of a scenario where I've ever had anybody working at 10 or 11 o'clock at night on the interior of a home.
All right. Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I think those are all my questions for you. So you're good.
Okay. If I may, can I answer the Schwartz question? I don't want to take away from your time. You mentioned about the, the rear yard buffer and about the HOA owning and maintaining it. And it's being added as condition number 37, I believe. I would like to rephrase that as a tree, tree preservation zone or a do-not-disturb zone on the rear 25 feet. The reason I can't really maintain, it's, it's on private property. A lot of these are going to be on people's lots. We will make it a tree preservation zone on the rear of the lot. But I can't have the HOA own and maintain those trees on those lots. Now, where they're not on a lot, yes, the HOA will be tasked with owning and maintaining it. But if we could reword that condition to a tree preservation zone on the rear 25 feet.
Randy, that was actually my next question. So if you want to address that.
I wanted to clarify that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Schwartz. I was only talking about the actual lots that are owned by the HOA, not the privately-owned lots. Those, we wouldn't want to see those maintained. Just the ones that are owned by the HOA, that the HOA maintains those as no-cut zones. Because the 25-foot grading limit on the private property, we've found that that's really hard to enforce on an individual property owner.
Well, I have, I have a question about that because technically, almost all of those, almost the whole property should have, almost all of it should have a private homeowner on it, right? So if the HOA says you can't cut into that 25 feet, then that private homeowner is bound by that HOA covenant, correct?
If it's an HOA rule, that's, I guess I'm, I'm thinking more, in the past, we've had it to be a city rule where it makes the city have to go in and try to tell people they can't cut down trees. So if it's an HOA, then, I mean, we can default to, to saying that the HOA can enforce the 25-foot. But I was thinking more along the lines of like the, the common areas that the HOA owns. But if council wants to do the entire area as a no-cut zone, not, not deeding it over to the HOA.
If we did that, I would record it on the plat. I'd record the tree preservation zone on the plat.
To be enforced.
That way the city can enforce it.
But that's where I'm, I want it to be enforced by the HOA, not the city. I mean, I guess we can talk about that.
You want to talk about that a little bit before we move on? Because I have other questions, but I know you're...
We've gone through this.
Exactly. That's why.
Multiple times.
Yeah.
And my opinion is that it's a 25-foot no-cut zone, which we've got definitions for.
[laughing]
And it is of condition number...
37.
38, or 37. And, you know, I think the HOA, it should be written into the HOA as well, which is not our deal. But that, that puts them on notice too with all the HOA property anyway.
We would need to change the name of that. I mean, right now it's called a grading limit. We have a definition of that too, so.
Well, it could be a no-grading and no-cut zone.
Up to council.
All right. I'm going to move on from that, though. No one else has any comments on that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Mormon, can you come up here and help me for a little bit? Sorry, you've been up a lot tonight. I want to talk a little bit about, I, I also drive Grange Hall a lot going towards Shakertown Road in that intersection. Is the concern, let me ask this way. With the traffic study, did it show any accidents on Grange Hall? Does it show accidents near Willowcrest Road or near that entrance on Bethel Christian Assembly?
Yeah, the traffic study looked more at traffic volumes, at level of service. It wasn't really a safety study per se, so.
Okay. So we wouldn't have the numbers of whether or not there's accidents on Grange because of people turning into Willowcrest or into the church?
That's correct. We would have to go and retrieve that information and look at those, those crash numbers.
Because looking at it now, I mean, it's a tenth of a mile from the proposed new driveway north of an entrance already and then just a tenth of a mile south of Willowcrest. I, I mean, is it the, is it just the line of sight grading coming north from Shakertown that is concerning having that entrance there?
Yeah, I, I think it's a, we can't really make them go back, you know, for their own entrances. The new entrances are going to be putting in. It's perfectly valid for the city to require those turn lanes for the condition.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
They're changing the existing conditions, so they have to help out with, with the solution of that. To have them go back and, and build, say, like a left turn bay for Willowcrest would, would be overstepping a bit.
No, no, I'm sorry. That's not what I'm asking. I think I'm not seeing as much of a concern that is being presented. I think that's, that's the question I'm trying. I'm trying to understand where the concern is because, like I said, I, I drive this road regularly. And knowing that Bethel's there, knowing that Willowcrest is right there, we're putting something in between that north-south entrance. It's not as though we're pushing it further south. So I just wasn't sure if it's that line of sight that's causing that concern by having this entrance here now.
Sure. Sure. As far as the, building the left turn lane and the right turn D cell lane, as far as requiring those.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been something, ever since I've been here, we've always required those for any, any new plat that's going in. Again, it's a, maybe a different philosophy from years ago, like when the Willow, Willowcrest plat was developed in the 50s or 60s. I know when, when Mr. Beach was here before me, he required the same thing, that we always put those in on these rural-style two-lane roadways to have those left turn lanes. We believe it's a, we've always had that philosophy. It's a safety necessity.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I really think it's a good idea with this property. I just, I feel like that will alleviate some of the concerns. And my opinion is, I mean, I, like I said, I regularly go on this road and I've noticed my speed is higher when I'm the only person on the road. But when there are more cars on that road, I'm much closer to that 35. So it may have the opposite effect. I'm not going to say that that's exactly what's going to happen. But I, I do know that it seems like cars go slower when there's more cars on that road, turning in and out of Rockfield, in and out of Willowcrest. And then with potential Spring House Park entrance over by there. We'll see what happens. But those are all my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Bales.
Mr. Mormon. Before you get too comfortable.
Yes.
From an engineer's perspective, do you have any problems or concerns with a flashing light that could be mounted?
Sure. It's an interesting concept. I would be just asked that would give us a chance to take a look at, at something and earn that by you. There's a manual that we have to follow when we install traffic control devices. I just want to make sure we're, we're in full compliance with what that manual requires of us. But I think we, we could accommodate something out there.
And then, Mr. Lipnos, would that be, would you, as a developer, consider that improvement if, if we were, if it met the engineering standard?
I would need more information before I could commit to that. I, I, I wouldn't even know what the cost of something like that was.
Well, I guess my point is, I, I'm, I'm feeling compelled to make it condition 38, that at least the engineer study it to determine whether it's appropriate or not from a traffic perspective. And then the expense be borne by the developer.
I, I would just reiterate that we did the traffic study and we meet the site distance criteria.
I understand.
But when you live in the area, you see how...
The traffic study becomes an abstraction.
I understand. I respect it. Completely understand. And, and I understand everybody's point.
Yeah. The overall cost, I'm not, we're not here to argue what it's going to cost and everything else. But knowing the financing of the entire project and everything else, I think that, one way or the other, if it's warranted and the council agrees, we should, we should at least consider it as a, as a condition. So maybe I'll circle back at that at the end of my comments to ask what you think. Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Burkett, can you, well, maybe this doesn't matter now. You said that the bottom of this was a 20-foot grading limit? Does it matter? Are we changing it to 25?
It has to do with the, they need to get, they're putting a retention, a retaining wall back there also. But it, it has to do with the existing grades. They have to get that at a certain angle so that somebody's backyard's not steeper than three to one. So they have to grade some of that back there, encroach a little bit into that 25 feet. So that's why we called it a 20.
So our condition needs to reflect that?
Yeah, I believe.
Are we just going to add, are we just, actually, are we just going to add a no-cut zone to the 20 and 25-foot grading limit?
Condition 14 does correctly say 20 feet. I just labeled that, but...
That, that's fine. I just, I didn't know what the thought process was to create a 20 versus a 25.
Can we just modify 14 and include a major?
You can change it from no grading or grading limit to a no-cut zone.
So do you think the no-cut zone will protect it from grading? I mean, it should, right?
Yeah. I mean, if you label, grading would just be just during the grading, no-cut zone is forever.
Okay. So, okay. Change 14. What was the thought process behind requiring only one tree per lot?
Historically, I mean, I, I know we did, on Turner, we did the second one in the rear. But all the other neighborhoods I've done was, instead of a street tree, we were just required a tree on the lot. Most, most builders will put more than that, more than the minimum. It was just a relocation of the street tree is what the one tree was.
Okay. So, Mr. Lipnos, can you tell me about your landscape plan for...
Yes. They are not currently developed at this point, but I will tell you, we have six or seven standard landscape plans for our, for our home plans that we, we, we use as a base and modify for each specific community. They do include a street tree and then they include a tree at the corner of the house that is kind of wrapped and incorporated into the, the bed. And in addition to the bushes around the, the house and then screening around the AC units and stuff like that. So there are, as far as trees go, in the front yard, there'll be two, the quote-unquote lawn tree or yard tree, and then what is typical in our landscape package.
Okay. I'm trying to find that condition. Is it in the...
I don't know that it's a condition. It's in the development text.
Okay.
In number 11, it just says one, one tree.
There it is, yeah. So it'd be okay if we modified that to be two?
Yes.
Okay. The hours of work is, is actually a pretty big deal as, as someone who lives right next to a new construction right now. I mean, seven-to-seven, Monday, or Monday through Saturday typically works. I'm just telling council that typically works. But there are times that happen after seven and on Sundays that have occasionally bothered me. And I'm not scared to pick up the phone and call Mr. Landrum and tell him about it. And so I will, I will say that Randy and Pete have been responding. And so, I will, I will say that Randy and Pete have been responsive to those times when we've had grading equipment at 10:30 at night doing that, so. Just reiterate that I, you know, those neighbors will be watching. The only, the last two things I think I've got is, for Mr. Mormon again, sorry, Jeff, I, I've got notes all over this page. A couple of comments were made about the new ponds and being new, and over time, they will silt in and, and become more dysfunctional, and, and also someone brought up that it would raise the water table. So from an engineer's perspective, can you just educate all of us on how those ponds are meant to function and how they're maintained over time?
Absolutely. When we built the ponds, there was a source of, a really good source of clay on site. So we took that clay and we lined the ponds with that clay, and what that does, it prevents that water, it holds the water, it creates that bowl to, the, the idea would be to stop the water from seeping into the groundwater and to hold it there, because, you know, from a, you know, aesthetics point of view, it's, it's much nicer to, to see a pond with water and with a fountain functioning than it would be with a big hole in the ground, so. So again, we, we lined them with, with clay, they should hold water. You know, nothing's ever 100%. We might get a little bit of leaky chair in there, but over time, they do tend to get much better at holding the water, but from what I've seen out there, they, they seem to be holding pretty well.
I guess, and then over time, I mean, explain how they function. I mean, what, how does the water flow through them and, or does the water flow from one pond to the next and?
It certainly does. There's actually a series of three ponds. The, the watershed itself actually extends to the other side of I-675. All that water heads to the east. Before the project, there was a culvert under Grange Hall Road where the, the water from the, what's now Spring House Park property would all drain directly to Willowcrest, where there was a big bowl in Willowcrest where it would trap the water, which is the issue that we had. When we built the project, we built that, that third pond on the Spring House Park property. We installed new storm sewer, which was, I think, was mentioned during the course of the meeting, where instead of it dumping on Willowcrest, that water was redirected via that storm sewer, which comes out on the far western edge of that, of that first pond there. Additionally, there was some pipe installed along Willowcrest and along River Hills, with the idea being, again, there was that, that topographic bowl there along Willowcrest, where by building the ponds, we were able to achieve enough vertical difference to, to drain that bowl and to get all the water moving where it's always going. The water, this watershed has always drained via that bridge and through the Willow, or Autumn Springs neighborhood, back to North Fairfield Road eventually.
And do you have any concerns with these ponds affecting the water table?
Again, with that clay barrier, that clay is going to prevent that water from traveling from the pond to the surrounding soils. So I, there shouldn't be any, any changes with the groundwater table with the installation of these, these ponds.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, so, after you've commented, I would suggest that we do modify a couple of the existing conditions, and I would also entertain additional condition for the engineering study for a flashing light. And I'm finished.
Thank you very much. One of the advantages of being last, because everybody's asked most of the questions. I think this might have been answered, but I just wanted to make sure, the roadway that's in the, in there that's going all, how much of that will be completed before you start building homes?
On Grange Hall Road?
No, no, no.
Interior?
In the interior.
If you can flip to these colored with the, there's a colored one with zoning on it. So all of Phase 1, all the yellow, will be developed first in Phase 1, and we will model, we haven't picked which our model lot is going to be, but we'll build homes in Phase 1. When we're probably 50 to 60% sold in that section, we will start development on Phase 2. Again, depending on time of year, we kind of want to hit our development, so we pave it in spring and/or summer, so depending on that timing. But Phase 1 will go first. I forgot how many lots exactly are in Phase 1, since we just moved the, the lines, but that will all be developed first in probably at least 50, 60% built out before we start development on Phase 2.
Okay, but as far as connection, I guess I go back to the 2019 tornado when we had a one-way-in, one-way-out.
Yep.
And it concerned me a lot.
Yeah, so we worked with, with the fire department, and so that's why we redid the phasing, and so we're going to put in that large Phase 2 to make that connection point. And before we, I know, Mr. Burkett gave us, you know, 10 building permits in, in Phase 2. The reality is, to pull a building permit, the development needs to be approved and accepted, so that connection will be made prior to any homes being built in Phase 2.
Okay. All right. That's something on traffic study, but Mr. Mormon answered that. But I think that's it for.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I had a quick question. I know you won't be able to answer this because you've not studied it, but from an accident standpoint, what have you heard about that area back there?
I haven't heard of any problems at all with, with crashes in that area. Obviously, I can pull statistics from any intersection or along Grange Hall and provide those two guys to see exactly what we've had and when we've had it, but there hasn't been any information that I've gotten that indicates any problem.
Other than speed?
Well, speed, obviously, yeah.
But that's pretty much everywhere we go anymore. So, okay, that's, yeah, if you could get that for us, just to kind of let us know, I would appreciate it. I don't know that it's going to affect anything tonight, but I just, I'd like to know that, because it would lend itself to some of the other things we talked about. So. All right, that's pretty much all I had. I'm just crossing things off as I go. So, I guess I'm ready to entertain a motion or a change or?
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, could we read back to me the, the two modified conditions?
Yeah, we were just going to go over those.
Okay.
Not sure that we've totally defined it yet, right? Because reading, reading Condition 14, it's kind of hard to put into words just that no, you can't just take out grading limit.
I was going to say, prior to any grading on the site, the applicant shall implement a no-cut zone 25 feet from the portion of the southern, northern, and western property lines, and 20 feet from the southern.
What if there are no trees to cut? In the, I mean, are we still going to, I mean, because we, I'm guessing, my point is, shouldn't we keep in the no-grading part?
You could add a separate condition at the end just to avoid that issue versus trying to modify 14 just to a Condition 37.
Okay.
I'll be the cleanest word.
So then, so then, Tiffany, is it Condition 37 would be?
A no-cut zone shall be implemented 25 feet from a portion of the southern and northern, eastern, western property lines, and 20 feet from a portion of the southern property line as depicted in Exhibit A.
That makes sense, Randy? I mean, that makes sense to me.
That's a, oh.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
I just, I want to make sure it doesn't sound like it's per parcel, like northern and west.
It is per parcel.
No, northern and western is, didn't you say?
All parcels.
Southern, northern, eastern, and western property lines, and 20 feet from a portion of the southern property line as depicted in Exhibit A, because there's one section that's in excess, or that they can't maintain the 25.
I think when you wrote it the first time, I was interpreting it as if I'm property, you know, if I'm in a middle property, the western part.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's, I think we want to make sure.
Well, is this, is this Exhibit A? So perhaps we can modify Exhibit A to say grading and no-cut limit, and, and that's the, that's a 20.
Yeah.
And I'd like to caveat that and say that that should be able to put into the HOA docs and enforced by the homeowners.
Yeah.
It's going to be a condition and?
And, yeah. And enforce, that way, that way the HOA is enforcing it instead of the city having to go out and?
When it comes down to it, people come to the city.
They have more teeth than we do in terms of being able to?
So Randy, I, I'm just, I'm cheating. I pulled back an ordinance from our, a couple meetings ago, and the no-cut zone, it says, "A no-cut zone shall be designated on the specific site plan and subdivision record plan. The no-cut zone indicated on the approved concept plan shall be located," this is very specific.
Bridlewood?
Yeah. But it does say, "The homeowners' association shall maintain the no-cut zone, and the developer and the homeowners' association shall grant to the city the right to enforce the duty of the owners, and the homeowners' association," is that?
Yeah.
That's an old lan, that's old language, because from a different, different zoning ordinance, but specific site plan, I mean, I just wondered if that was?
That's what I'd be looking for.
Looking for, okay.
Where it's self-policing.
Councilman Schwartz, can you read that from his computer in the, in a motion?
I'm just, I didn't read it. I will have to know if it's site-specific or not.
So do we want to add both conditions prior to, I mean, I guess before I read this and propose we add an additional condition, do we also want to add the 38th condition at the same time?
Do separate.
Do separate?
Do separate motions, because there's a chance one could pass and not the other.
Okay. I would move to add an additional condition, number 37, that a no-cut zone shall be designated on the specific site plan and subdivision record plan as indicated on the approved concept plan. The no-cut zone indicated on the approved concept plan shall be located in the easement to the homeowners' association for the purpose of preserving in perpetuity the vegetation in this area for ingress and egress to this area, and for maintaining and removing dead vegetation from this area. The homeowners' association shall maintain this no-cut zone, and the developer and homeowners' association shall grant to the city the right to enforce the duty of the homeowners' association to maintain and enforce no-cutting in the no-cut zone easement. The homeowners' association shall maintain this no-cut zone and shall ensure all existing vegetation in the area is preserved in perpetuity unless such vegetation is approved for removal by the city. Permanent markers shall be installed by the developer for the homeowner or association identifying the boundaries of this no-cut zone as approved by the planning department.
Didn't it sound quite right, because it talked about an HOA easement, and that's not the intent? The intent is every parcel?
Would you have stopped me a little earlier, Pete?
Sorry.
At this voting stage, how, how exact does the wording need to be right now?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Can we finalize this if this moves on to a second reading? No, this isn't a second reading, I'm sorry.
This is it, so we need enough specificity so that it can be put in the conditions.
Can we just say a no-cut zone shall be established in the same location as the grading limits as depicted in?
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, to be included in the homeowners' association documents and enforced by the homeowners' association.
I believe that one worked.
Don't move. Thank you.
Second.
I use as few words as possible.
I'm fine with that.
A motion and a second on this amendment. The public session is closed. This covers it. We've got those covered.
In the definition.
We've done the definition. We've been through this before. This is not the first time we've had to do this, so it's covered. If there's a dangerous tree, it would be taken out. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now you had one more?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd make a motion to modify Condition 11, which, which talks about the minimum number of trees per lot. It just says there shall be one tree. I, I make a motion that Condition Number 11 is modified to say there shall be two trees, a minimum of 2.5, yeah.
Second.
A minimum of two, yeah.
I have a motion and a second to do what Pete said. All those in favor?
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question about that. If you read down through, you said two, two trees, but then it says that it shall be planted in a very specific location. If you read the rest of that, it says it shall be planted between sidewalk and front of house.
Yeah, front yard trees.
Do they have to both be in the front yard?
The two that I'm speaking of do. They can put as many as they want in the back.
I think the developer was saying his usually, the one you normally put in goes in the front yard anyway, right?
Yeah, I would be okay with the condition modification as, as proposed.
I thought they were both there, so.
Yeah, I mean, typically when you see that new houses, it's the front yard that gets all the landscaping, and the backyard is grass or whatnot.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that adds the 37 and 38, right?
38, we need to, I, I would propose Condition 38. I don't know, I'm going to propose this. Which, which, help me wordsmith this, which, which asks the engineer to?
Conduct a study.
Conduct a study on the viability of a flashing beacon.
Its viability and cost.
We already did a traffic study, and we already heard that they, they meet the requirements for it, so I guess, is there a study, Mr. Mormon, is there a study that exists that would determine whether or not a safety light is required past what we've already done? Would it be an accident study instead of traffic? Or what, you know, what?
Maybe required isn't, maybe required isn't the right term I'm getting at. It's, is it a violation if we put one in where it's not required? Because you've already said that you've done a traffic study and?
Right, and that's what I want to check, is before we install a traffic control device, we have to make sure we're in compliance with what the, the manual says of us. We could put one up there like a supplemental, like, like a warning flash or something like that, but I'd like to take a look and make sure we're in compliance with the manual requires of us.
So the supplemental can be done immediately, but anything more permanent needs to be investigated to see what the manual says? Is that?
If it's like a supplemental, like, for, like, like a warning, you know, your typical yellow signs with the black lettering, you can put those up, usually typically without a study, but again, I just want to make sure what I propose is, is in compliance with what the manual says has to be, so.
Okay, so maybe it's just Condition 38 is a requirement that relevant studies are investigated for appropriate signage at that area.
And I guess my concern is that?
Why it's supposed to be a flashing light, not appropriate signage, will be backed up for the sign, and that's nowhere of ill, in my opinion.
My, my concern is this is, there's already a development agreement, and talks about what we're, they're getting compensated for doing on Grange Hall Road. This would be, I believe, south of the development if there was going to be a sign put in, and we can't make a developer pay for a flashing light.
It's due to the, due to the development.
Is it right, right next to?
It's due to the development.
I mean, once again, I, I'm just going to say I have concerns about making this requirement where there's already a traffic study that says what they've done is adequate and requiring additional burden on them, that there's no evidence for, given the fact that we have an already paid for, already given traffic study.
Well, I think that's why I was asking if there is an additional study that would be different than the traffic study, because if not, I mean, if not, then I agree with you. And it sounds like it's not a study. It sounds like it's just Mr. Mormon needs to, wants to do a little background research before making any type of suggestion.
Well, we could always just not include it here, and we could still ask Mr. Mormon to do the study, and then the city could pay for the darn, darn thing if it's.
That is totally okay.
I know that. I was trying to get a little creative and help everybody out here.
So I think we're good with no 38 then, if we know that it's going to be incumbent upon Mr. Mormon? Sorry, not to, not to give you more work, but you volunteered, so. Great, perfect.
It works.
So can we move forward?
You okay with that, Councilman Kern?
I wasn't looking for anything permanent by any means. I was seeing this as a, perhaps three months into the first critical of Section 1's work. I was hoping? three months into the first critical of Section 1's work. I was hoping it would be the kind of thing that would alert drivers, realizing, yes, there's no, no end-all to this thing. I wasn't looking for a permanent light by any means or flasher, but at least when the construction begins, it alerts people, and we have it for perhaps three months.
How about, how about when they start construction, could we put a sign down there that says "Construction Ahead" and maybe do something like that? At least that would make them aware that there's something in front of them that they're not used to seeing. I mean, that's just, just a thought, so.
Understand.
Not a part of the, not a part of the developer's requirement. Okay.
I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for PUD 25-4, specific site plan number one, on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfy the standards of criteria set forth in section 158.066, approval procedures for specific site plan of the Beaver Creek zoning code. I further move that this motion with all of the following conditions. There are 37. Be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Public hearing, ASRA, PC 25-6. Actually, uh, let's take a five-minute break. That's right.
0.83 acres of land. It's located near central Beaver Creek, just to the east of Dayton-Zenia-North Fairfield intersection. Right now, there's a, it's empty, but was a tire choice, or formerly before that Monroe Tire Auto Store. Next door is the, there's a, the American Legion, and then on the other side is the Noble Romans Pizza, I guess. Donatus. Always going to be a Noble Romans to me from way back in the day. That's hard to get out of my brain. This here is a picture of tire care before it emptied out, just to give you an idea of the existing site as it is. Seen here is the site plan, as the applicant stated, they're maintaining the access points as they currently are, they're just moving the building around. You can see, it's a slightly larger building, but we are going to gain some green space on the interior of the lot. Also, if you notice on the southern portion, some of the parking spots that are right up against the bush line now will be moved back, so we're going to increase some of the setback of the parking lot along Dayton-Zenia Road. And it's just going, in general, you know, it's a refreshed, new building that's going to meet the current standards of mostly brick and stone with a little bit of evis on the top in front of the building, but they are showing the same architectural features on all four sides of the building. So this is the type of building that council, Planning Commission and Council has seen in terms of architectural standards that wrap all four sides. It's an upgraded building, and it'll be an improvement to the site. The landscape plan shows a variety of landscaping around all four sides of the building to help, you know, accentuate the site and make it a nice-looking site. Planning Commission reviewed the application last week. There, it's actually a motion, not a resolution, but there are 13 conditions in the motion for your consideration, and staff and Planning Commission both recommend approval of the applicant's request. One thing I forgot to bring up was the signage, being that with this AZRA, they didn't particularly have sign size on their building or ground sign, but they're just going to reface the existing ground sign, and they'll be allowed up to what's allowed in a B3 zoning district, which is one square foot of wall sign for every linear foot of building frontage. So again, staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of the applicant's request. And happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. As he said, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have questions regarding this. I would just want to thank the presenter. I look forward to having an AutoZone in town, actually, as somebody that actually still works on my vehicle, on my own. So, that's all I have. I think it'll be a huge improvement for the property also.
Councilman Doer.
I echo the sentiments of Councilman Littoral. In terms of redevelopment, there's a lot that's really good here, and thankful for the investment, or proposed investment in Beaver Creek. Mr. Burkett, thank you very much for the map. I thought that was fantastic, and it really answered my first question in terms of size of building and overlay. The graphic is fantastic, so thank you. Thank you for that. Two questions. One is, any word from the neighbors, particularly the American Legion?
You know, the Legion, we actually were speaking with them several months before this project came about. They have a retaining wall that, it's retaining their property, but it's not on their property. So, the wall was falling apart, and they wanted to work on it, and we couldn't grant them authority to work on the wall because it's on AutoZone's property. So, we're going to work with AutoZone as they're going through the permitting process and see what the Legion needs to do to work on that wall, and kind of do that in coordination. But, being that there's no residents around, we generally don't have public input on these kind of properties.
Thank you. What's, in terms of deliveries to the site, what kind of sized trucks are trying to traverse that area?
I mean, you're going to have full-sized delivery trucks. We routed this to the fire department, and they didn't have any concerns getting their fire truck in, so.
It's a difficult one if you're trying to turn left to exit, you know, if you're trying to go back out along Dayton-Zenia Road. It's a challenge, but I'm just curious getting in and to the back of the location, it strikes me as difficult, but the fire department's okay to...
Yeah, they couldn't have, I mean, I couldn't imagine that delivery truck would be bigger than the fire truck. And if they didn't have concerns, then that was how we left it, I mean, from a loading standpoint.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Garcia. Councilman Curran.
Well, I just want to say, I'm glad to have AutoZone, and we have O'Reilly's, and then we have an empty Advantage. Been sitting there how many years?
Long time.
Director? At least six or seven years, so great to have a neighbor. No comments beyond that, Your Honor.
Councilman Schwartz.
Nothing other than thank you, and very excited for the redevelopment and to see that happening in this quarter. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting here for two hours and 40 minutes. It is a really nice improvement that is going to happen in really what we consider our downtown core of Beaver Creek. So, thank you, and look forward to it. That's all.
Now, you know during Popcorn Festival, there's going to be a beer garden in there, right? That's usually what's sitting in there, is they've got a tent with that, so you will have to contend with that in September. So, other than that, thank you for that, just coming to Beaver Creek. I think it's going to be a good addition of that corner. It's been empty for a little while now, and it's, I think having it maintained will be a good thing, so. I don't have anything else. Motion?
Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of an administrative site plan review for PC 25-6 AutoZone on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials satisfy the standards and criteria set forth in Section 158.080, standards and criteria for AZRA approval of the Beaver Creek zoning code. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully reported in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this AZRA request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-16.
Ordinance 25-16, an ordinance to declare certain city-owned property interests as surplus and to approve the conveyance of land for right-of-way purposes from city-owned property generally known as Green County Auditor, parcel number B42-2-6-0-15, and generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Grange Hall Road and Research Boulevard.
Giving Jeff a break, huh?
I am, yes. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This evening, we have, as was just stated, conveyance of land for the Grange Hall Road pedestrian improvement project that has been ongoing here for design and right-of-way this year. This first slide here for you is just a location of where this site is at compared to where we are today. So where we are is over in the star on the right side there, and then the left side, the left-side star over there at 835 at Grange Hall Road is where this is located. The project description for this project, it's a pedestrian path along the west side of Grange Hall Road along with, and that's between Research Boulevard and Kensington-Glen. Along with that is the path through Spring House Park that is going to be along the east side of Spring House Park, as was shown in kind of the master plan earlier, the last couple of years. Like I said earlier, we are in the design and right-of-way acquisition phase of the project, and construction is scheduled to begin for this project in 2026. With this, the right-of-way, we need minor strip takes of right-of-way for this project. As part of that right-of-way take needs, we would need right-of-way from the city-owned property at the southwest corner of Grange Hall Road and Research Boulevard, and that is .14, or, excuse me, .419 acres of permanent right-of-way that's needed. And I'll show you map here in a second of what that is. So, the highlighted parcel there in orange, the name there, that's the parcel we are looking at there, that is the city-owned parcel at the corner. The strip take is for where the existing, I'm going to go forward one more slide, the north end here, the right-of-way is wider than the south end that's highlighted on this map. So we need to, in order to construct the project, to put the sidewalk in, we have to buy a strip take of right-of-way to construct that project and put that sidewalk in. So that's what that is for. And that, yeah, so it goes, yeah, it goes, so, yeah, this is south end of parcel 30, I can't remember, I can't read it, but, that parcel that we own right there. And then towards the north end, we already, excuse me, we already own, there's already enough right-of-ways, we don't need to buy any more right-of, permanent right-of-way for that section, so. The next steps with this would be council approval for the attached ordinance, allowing the conveyance of the required right-of-way for the property, and the staff recommends the approval. So, with that, I will answer questions.
Anything from council?
This section here, we're Carter Lumber Company. It seems like that really, it's very soft in there, floods pretty heavily when you have a good-sized rain. What's, what's the plan in there? It seems like it's very mucky, all that, that area.
Sure, so Councilman Curran, there would be, you can't really see it through here, but there, on the screen, it's kind of small, hard to see, but there is actually a swale and some drainage that we will be collecting to help with that, to keep that storm water to get down to the creek that's south of this parcel. So, would help with that, with this project.
Mr. Smith, you mentioned a couple times about buying right-of-way.
I'm sorry, yes.
Can you clarify what?
Sure. What we're doing here? Yeah. So the city owns this parcel, excuse me, Mr. Bales, for misstating that, but the city owns this parcel already, so we would not buy right-of-way from ourselves. We are looking, where we need to convey the land to do the project, to be able to put that sidewalk on the property. There's no buying or transferring of funds for this property. And other parcels on this project that are owned by private property, private owners, those we would be buying property from, but this one is just a conveyance of the property we already own to convert it to permanent road right-of-way from that parcel.
And what's the funding source for those other parcels that you do need to buy?
Sure, so the funding source for our right-of-way acquisition is all local funds for that, yeah. There's no federal funds for those, that portion of the project, so.
Thank you. Councilman Schwartz, you have anything?
No, thank you. I move...
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I motion to move Ordinance 25-16 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move, excuse me, Ordinance 25-16 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution 25-20.
Resolution 20, 25-20, to determine that the petition to establish the Beaver Creek Community Authority is sufficient and complies with the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code to set the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorize the notice of such hearing by publication.
Is that Beaver Creek Community Authority or the New Community Authority?
New Community Authority.
No, you said Beaver Creek.
No, New, New Community Authority.
It's New Community Authority. Mr. Lonsbury.
It does say Beaver Creek Community.
It does say that there.
Yep. Wonder if that's the title of the, of the entity? I'm looking at the petition right now. Yeah, it's going to be called the Beaver Creek Community Authority, which is an NCA.
Okay. Because I thought it was an NCA, but I wasn't sure.
We've got one error on there already, that one's, that one's not an error. So we've talked about the NCA already a little bit. An NCA, or New Community Authority, is created by statute, ORC 349, there's a statutory process for creating a new community authority. It creates a separate political subdivision that has economic development powers. In this particular case, the Beaver Creek Development, the proposed NCA would impose a 4.5 mil levy on any new houses built in the Rockford's new development. The funds from that, and it's 30 years, the funds from that would be used in part to pay back the $800,000 that we've talked about, but it would also provide some additional fundings for development in the area. So, an NCA does not cost anyone in the city of Beaver Creek any extra money, except the people who buy those new homes in that new development. So this is a separate way of getting money from a new development for the, them to pay for improvements in the city. This was, the petition was filed by the developer last Friday. There's a timing issue with having the hearing. It has to be no sooner than 30 days after that, and no later than 45 days. So initially, Steve and I, Steve McHugh and I, had proposed that the date of September 29, it was typo'd into there, it's September 28. September 29 is, we did not have a normal council meeting. So, we're proposing that this be amended to September 22, which fits within that 30-to-45-day time period for that public hearing that's required by statute, and would allow us not to have a special meeting on the 29th. So, I'm recommending approval of the, of the motion.
Any discussion on this at this point?
None.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to amend Resolution 25-20 by amending the public hearing date to Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
I have a motion and a second to amend this to, say, September 22nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25-20 as amended.
Second.
It will be a public hearing then. I have a motion and a second to approve the amended resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Yeah, that would be a public hearing, yeah, be a public hearing then. Okay, decision items, we have a couple of board appointments we have to look at. Sure.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and council, we have two board appointments for your consideration. We had a vacancy in the Planning Commission and a vacancy in the Green County Board of Health. Both of those applications were forwarded to council for review. We have spoken to each one of them to let them know tonight that this was consideration, just to make sure that they were still interested. These were part of the 25 applications, the original. We're pretty much at the bottom of the barrel now, so hopefully we don't have any more vacancies, or we may have to actually go out.
Might want to rephrase that.
Bottom of the barrel?
I don't want those people to think they're bottom of the barrel.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I did not mean that. These are very qualified, but we're out of qualified Kansas. That's what I meant. Oh, yeah, no disrespect, no. Bottom of the barrel, meaning we're just out of them. And actually, we didn't even know we needed Green County Board, and this application, applicant, applied only for the Green County Public Health, and that's all she applied for, and we didn't have a vacancy at that time, so that matched perfectly. So, both, Green County Board of Health did, we forwarded the application to them, and they concurred that the experience was a good fit, so they're recommending it as well. And council, or Planning Director, myself reviewed the Planning Commission position and also recommend.
Mayor, I would move to appoint Laura Palumbo to fill the Planning Commission vacancy term to February 28th, 2027.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Laura Palumbo to the vacancy on the Planning Commission board until February 28th, 2027. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have one more.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Ashley Hartman to the Green County Board of Health, vacancy term to February 29th, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Ashley Hartman to the Green County Board of Health to fill a term that ends February 29th, 2028. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we finally got there. Council time. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a few things. This weekend, I was able to finally get over to Anchored Baking, and highly recommend their chocolate chip cookie was fabulous, and so I would encourage residents to check it out. I also wanted to thank Southern Ohio Brewing. I was out there yesterday, they had a fundraiser similar to the one at Wandering Griffin that went to Ellie's Rainy Day Fund, which the mayor kind of discussed, but helps those who are in need and have a pet that has some emergency care. I also went to Bombers CrossFit this weekend for the first time in about two and a half years for a fundraiser that they had. It was a wad for a cause. A dear friend of mine lost one of her college roommates by suicide, he was a veteran, and so they raised money for a organization called Puppies Behind Bars, who help with PTSD for military members and those in law enforcement. And because of that, they've been able to adopt one dog in Andrew's name, and I think we are well on our way to adopting another one, so very excited for that. And last but not least, this month is overdose awareness month, and Green County will be recognizing that tomorrow from 5:30 to 6:30 at the courthouse. As I have shared with all of you, my brother died by overdose, and so I would encourage you to attend the ceremony to recognize those who are struggling and those who have lost loved ones due to the opioid epidemic. And if not, wear purple in remembrance of those. And in that same vein, I have our Region 14 meeting tomorrow, so hopefully we'll come back with some more news from that meeting for our next council session. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Just real quick, shout-out to the Beaver Creek Police Department, they do a phenomenal job. Officers have been out and about in the community, talking to residents, just being present. Officer Diaz was in our neighborhood at lemonade stands. It's always great to see the officers out there, really talking to the kids, talking to the families. So thank you for all you do in keeping us safe and really letting us get to know you.
Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Although tangential to our work, it is important, I think, in connecting with the schools alongside Mayor and Councilman Curran. We attended the Beaver Creek City Schools opening day, always a great opportunity to see what they're doing at the high school, but it connects to the middle schools and elementary school, and kicking off the year for 8,200 students across the city township, and then some other tangential areas in Fairborn and Sugar Creek Township in limited capacities. And likewise, alongside the same members, and Vice Mayor Bales attended the preschool ribbon-cutting for the seven new classrooms, and really a fantastic space, and thank you to Synergy and for all of their great work, and for caring for our preschool students. Like to give a shout-out to Dick's Sporting Goods, the Dick's House of Sports, they offer 20%, discount for the Beaver Creek Soccer Association in a weekend leading up to the soccer season, and I think it's a great way in our community for many people to be able to purchase soccer equipment and other sports equipment, and a nice way of giving back. And then finally, I'd like to thank the Beaver Creek Township Fire Department. This is an annual event at my church, University Baptist Church, where the students in the ministry, roughly 100, 120 students go outside, and it's, you know, shaving foam, all kinds of colors, and they, they just get really kind of messy, fun opening day, and then they get hosed off. And it's a, it's a very nice connection point for the, the fire department, and I want to give them a shout-out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littoral.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to keep it short and sweet, since we've all been here too long. I appreciate all the citizens who've come out here tonight. It's a big deal. I know that it kind of feels like it's walking through mud and not getting stuff done, but we are listening to you, and I think, I just hope that the citizens that do show up do understand that we put thought into this stuff, and we have legal counsel here that we ask questions to. And you do bring up issues that, that we take into consideration, that we haven't thought about, so I thank you for that, and that's all I have to say.
Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things, one, we had at Rotary, the sheriff in Green County spoke very eloquently and explained, of course, the new jail. Wanted to let us know November 19th will be the ribbon-cutting, and invitations extended to come out and see the new facility. It's very exciting and badly needed in Green County. Also, of course, I attended Business Link's with his honor, had the opportunity, as they always do, to recognize small businesses and new businesses coming into Beaver Creek, and Patterson House did an excellent, excellent job of hosting that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we had our golf advisory committee meeting, so I thought I'd bring you all up to speed a little bit on some of the capital projects that are either underway or finished this year. So the cart bridge on hole number one is complete. They will be paving the bridge surface this fall when they do their cart path renovation on hole 11. All of the bunker renovations on the front nine are finished, and bunkers on 12, 13, 14, and 15 will happen this fall. All of the HVAC units that were scheduled to be replaced in the clubhouse have been done, so that's a huge improvement. And in August, they average 225 rounds of golf per day.
Wow. Incredible.
So, that's crazy. So they're doing very well, and one last thing, they've decided to keep the golf carts one more season, mainly because, not because they're in really good shape, because they're kind of not, but the GPS units that are attached to the golf carts have, they had one year longer on their, their agreement term than the carts themselves. So, we'll be done paying for carts for a year, pay for the GPS, and then next year, all of it will get replaced, so that's all.
Thank you very much. Another busy couple of weeks. I attended the ribbon-cutting for the new preschool, and you're right, Synergy did an amazing job. I walked in that building, didn't recognize it, it was, they really did a great job with all those upgrades they did. And opening day celebration for the schools, it was really nice to listen to Beaver Creek friends, who I'm very familiar with, saying, ROTC and the band, Jeff, they're doing an amazing job out there, they really are. I don't know where you find all that talent, but it just keeps coming, and I don't know. How many people are in the band this year? 240. Down from what it was a couple of years ago, but, but that's okay. I was able to present a certificate of appreciation of VFW Post 8312 for all the support they give to the city, especially for Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, everything they do, and I think they're working with the police department on the honor guard now, too, so that's, that's good. I'm looking forward to seeing that. Was able to attend the dedication for the new Sugar Creek Township Veterans Memorial, and the dedication of the statue for Jim Peewee Martin, who was a paratrooper in World War II. If he was still alive, he would say, I don't want a statue, doesn't do that, but they had to show something. Was able to go to a first look at the new Care Flight helicopter, thanks to Katie's husband, and was invited to that, and he came in almost like Tom Cruise, at an angle just as fast as he could come in. The big difference in that is they can actually carry two patients at one time and treat both of them now, which they couldn't do before. I, too, was at the Chamber Links. I, too, was at the Chamber Links, I was one of the residents there, their son is Todd Bensiger, who used to play for the Cincinnati Reds, so I got to talk to him, that was really kind of neat. I attended the ribbon cutting for the addition to the Beaver Creek Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is right down the street from this new development. It seems like it was just yesterday we attended the groundbreaking, it just, it's amazing how quickly they went. Was also able to attend the celebration of life service for C.J. Bigler, she was a longtime Beaver Creek resident, who was very active in the community, and we will miss her. One last thing, I was reading the In Touch, and it said, conversation with council that's scheduled for September eighteenth, was going to be at the new Pizza Dive location up across from the mall, it will not be, it'll be at the old one at forty twenty-one Dayton Xenia, and that's on, as I said, September eighteenth. So their new position is not open yet, and that's all I have.
All right, just a quick couple on the city manager's report tonight. Town Hall, that is Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, this Wednesday, six to eight P.M. at Beaver Creek Golf Club. Learn about city's finances, including funding options, revenue sources, and how funds are allocated. Presentation followed by Q and A, and that, so that's at the golf course this Wednesday night. Shakertown Road Project, open house Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, five to seven P.M. at Beaver Creek City Council Chambers here in Council City Hall. Project is in collaboration with Ohio Department of Transportation, improvements to Shakertown Road from Carthridge Drive to Southern Bell Boulevard. Open house is to provide information about the project, discuss and answer questions, and gather feedback. More about the project can be found at beaver creek ohio.gov/engineering. Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival, it's always the week after Labor Day, Saturday, September sixth, ten A.M. to eight P.M., and Sunday, eleven to six. The festival is held along Dayton Xenia, I think everybody pretty much knows that, but if you can't find it there, I don't know what, where else to look, but arts, crafts, food, car show, five K run, and more. Parking info and schedule of events online at beaver creek popcornfestival.org. The Dayton Xenia Road will close about four A.M. on September sixth, and will reopen around midnight on that Sunday night. Festival is not organized by the city, however, city and police both have a booth together, so please feel free to stop by. We have volunteers, I think most of council will be manning the booths, along with myself and other staff members, so please stop by and say hello. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. And now we've reached that point with citizen comments, where you can address council on any subject, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Curtis Tricarico, three one three one Clay Door Drive. I recently went to the BMV and got this handout, it says, you're allowed to drive your car three feet from bicycles, and I assume that includes pedestrians, too. And I'm like, are you, are you absolutely crazy? Anyway, I have a handout that shows that pedestrian deaths are twenty-five percent of all collision deaths between cars, trucks, semis, pedestrians, bicycles, and, but not the huge number of deaths from people driving their cars into fixed objects, like telephone poles, or into buildings, or people rolling their vehicles over. And just to skip ahead with all this, I don't think I can get this done in three minutes. Semi trucks kill one in eight, if all you include are collisions between passenger vehicles, like the ones you all drive, and semis. Are semis like one in eight vehicles on the road? Or is it more like one in eight thousand? One in eight hundred, maybe? Well, it's the same with pedestrians, are pedestrians, even though they're twenty-five percent of deaths, are they one in four things that you see on the road? Probably more like one in four thousand, right? So it's literally a thousand times more dangerous to be hit by a car if you're a pedestrian, or to be hit by a semi if you're in a car. And why is that? Because they, the weight difference is ten, twenty, and forty times as much. So your semis, you remember seeing this guy do the U-turn in Florida, and the minivan went underneath it? Well, he, that minivan hit like an I-beam, it was like an iron I-beam in there. And it's, I mean, his trailer alone was probably, what was it, twenty thousand pounds, and the minivan's four thousand? So that's, that's like five times heavier. But what's a car versus a pedestrian? According to the airlines, your average weight of a, an American is a hundred and ninety pounds. The smallest car on the road is like two thousand. And they, they used to go up to eight thousand with the Ford Excursion, now they go up to seven thousand with the large pickup trucks and the Hummer. So what's average American, two hundred pounds? An econo box, two thousand? So that's ten times heavier. Your minivan's four thousand, that's twenty times heavier. Your large pickup trucks, trucks, fifteen times heavier, and then the Ford Excursion, but thank God it's been discontinued. Eight thousand pounds is forty times heavier? So, so this, the state of Ohio wants you to drive three feet away from pedestrians and bicycles. I'm like, what if semis did that to you all day long? Oh, and by the way, they drive thirty miles an hour through the residential. So what if semis all drove a hundred on the interstate, thirty over, and seventy around town, that's thirty over, and they missed you by three feet? Every time.
We've reached the three minutes, so.
Wow.
I would have a conversation with the chief about that.
Well, it's the state of Ohio.
There's nothing we can do, those are, those are set up by the state, so it's not really anything we can control, but.
Maybe we can do something about getting bicycles on the sidewalk instead of the street. Is that a city council?
Chief.
Jeff Sedelko, twelve sixty-eight Freedom Point. It's been a long night. The reason I'm here and spent this wonderful evening with you is the TIF, right? Somehow, you guys were considering a TIF on a residential area. I think we're going to have a real problem if trying to pass an income tax where one of the biggest concerns is the lack of accountability on where the money is spent. That TIF, as, as Mr. Graham was very nice going back and forth trying to explain to me, would have redirected funds from other places that the citizens have voted to spend money. So even the fact that you were even considering one, really, we have to really take a step back and, and think about how we're spending money. So first of all, thank you for finding another alternative. Seems odd, we haven't seen that before. Seems like maybe we should figure out if we can do also that same solution for some of our school units, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Trout, twenty-one eighty-seven Bassett Court. I, too, had extreme reservations on that TIF, and if it's not going to happen, and I just need a concurrence, is that not going to happen? Is that what you can?
The TIF is still, the hearing on that is next month.
Okay, next month. And the other one is this Community Authority public hearing, that you're going to be assessing a four mil penalty to anybody that buys a new house in a new residential district on top of the, the funds that they're going to have to spend for a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? Is that what I'm hearing? So if that is the case, as I, I've got very serious reservations, you know, that sounds like very vile and repugnant legislation that you folks are considering, and I have an extreme concern on it, so, like I said, I'm going to go read and research and everything else like that, we will see what we have, but on the surface, that is a horrible idea. Thank you.
Seeing none, I will close the citizen comment portion. Councilman Curran?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, please. We are adjourned.